All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the August 15th meeting of the Town of Corder Madera Town Council. First up, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bailey. Councilmember Revazio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Here.
Mayor first.
Here. Thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We just returned from a closed session. We have advised staff, and there is nothing further to report at this time. First up on the agenda is open time for public comment. This is the time set aside for folks to come up to the podium if they want to speak about something not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? All right, seen none, let's move on to presentations. This is always the fun part of the meeting. First up is a certificate of appreciation for Nancy Fielder-Fiedler. There you are. Okay, I figured you were here somewhere. All right. I have a proclamation, or certificate of appreciation, so I'd like to read this if I might. "To Nancy Fiedler, in recognition of Nancy's contributions to the Town of Corder Madera as the Parks and Recreation Department's Senior Programs Coordinator. Since February 2nd, 2015, Nancy has served as a first liaison between the Parks and Rec Department and age-friendly Corder Madera, responsible for creating and implementing numerous quality programs for seniors in our community, including the enormously popular Corder Madera Senior Fair, which has become an annual event. Nancy's programs have provided seniors the opportunity to remain active and engaged, and the Corder Madera Town Council extends its sincere gratitude for her service to our community." You will be missed. But... Got it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's a traditional that we get a photo.
Oh, and I'm one that hates photos.
I hate them too, so just grabbing bearin'.
Thank you all again. It was my pleasure.
We have a microphone right back here.
I can speak loud.
Actually, we're recording it for the folks at town.
Oh, great.
Uh-oh.
Now you shouldn't have told me that. Thank you all very, very much, and thank you all to the council. It's been a pleasure working for Corder Madera Parks and Recreation, and I couldn't have done it without the help of many, many people at Corder Madera Parks and Recreation, and thank you again. Hopefully, I'll be called on sometime to help out. Thank you again.
We'd love to.
Diane, Diane, could I add to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. There aren't enough words to describe Nancy. She has just brought so much life to the Park and Rec Department and to so many of the seniors. It was Nancy who was able to save the Thursday Lunch Program, which is an amazing program at the Rec Center. You get a really nutritious, well-balanced, organic or whatever, everything, really fresh food, for $3. And if there are people that can't swing the $3, then they can have it, just enjoy the lunch and the company. And it's grown from when there might be a couple people showing up to where there's just a regular turnout, and it is a delight to see how many people made friends through those Thursday lunches thanks to Nancy. And that is in all, she's organized speaker programs at the library, and she's planned some amazing trips for adults and seniors. And you just can't imagine how lost we're going to be without her. And so, when she says if we need her, she's going to get a call once a week at least. So, anyway, that's what you get, Nancy, when you live in Corder Madera. We will count on you. But thank you so much for all you did for seniors.
I'm going to make her feel better. And she's the, just the greatest job. Well, I hope I will.
Would you like to reiterate? Pam?
Oh, yeah, Pam. Pam, are you... Pam! Pam Waterston is our new replacement for Nancy. She already knows she has a hard act to follow. But we are so delighted to have her on board, and we just have loads... Age-friendly Corder Madera has loads of stuff to put on her plate, and she has been employed to really work hand-in-hand with age-friendly Corder Madera, and that also is an organization that is being well-served to more and more seniors in Corder Madera. So, welcome, at this point, Pam, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, we have another proclamation. This one, other end of the age spectrum, this is in support of Child Support Awareness Month. Last week, we had somebody come to speak on this, and it really touched my heart, and I think the other members of the council as well. So, I'm just going to read a few of these whereas paragraphs, so you can... Oh, there she is. So, you can get a sense of why this is so important. And again, this is a proclamation in support of Child Support Awareness Month, August 2017. Whereas Child Support Awareness Month celebrates children and promotes their financial security by providing families with the services they need, excuse me, to raise healthy and happy children, and whereas the Marin County Department of Child Support Services is dedicated to making sure that Marin County children receive what all children need: support through economic security. And whereas Marin County has some of the most supportive parents in California, with over 78 percent of monthly support owed, whereas Marin County Department of Child Support Services provides award-level record of service to families in our community, and has been ranked as one of the top 10 local child support agencies in the state for the past 10 years. And whereas Recognition of Child Support Awareness Month, the Marin County Department of Child Support Services calls upon all communities and leaders to promote the education outreach to convey the importance of supporting children in Marin County. So, I'll leave it at that. Very, very important topic. So, this is a proclamation. Would the council join me in approving this?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything? Is there a microphone?
Well, I encourage anybody who needs the services of the Department of Child Support Services to come and visit us, or tell somebody you know who needs the services of the department. We're at 88 Roland Way in Nefato, and look forward to talking to any of you who want to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Am I pronouncing your last name Vandell? Margaret Vandell, thank you. And it was Margaret who came last meeting to encourage us on this one. All right, let's move on now to consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. I would like to remove item 4.1.6, the letter of opposition to Senate Bill 35. Is there anybody who would like to remove any other items? Todd?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to remove from the consent calendar and the agenda item 4.1.8. It's the authorization for the town manager to enter a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies. Currently, the town attorney and myself are in negotiations regarding a specific section within the contract agreement related to Section G, the indemnity, and so we're in negotiations, and so I ask that we pull that and bring it back at the next council meeting.
All righty.
I would... Is there a way we can authorize signing of the contract and then authorize you to work on the specific language you're trying to perfect, so it doesn't have to come back to contract, as long as the dollar amounts don't change?
Through the mayor? Of course. Mike?
You could certainly provide that level of authorization. I think you'd have to be clear the extent of discretion. You saw the indemnity provisions that are in there, and so, to what extent are you comfortable with the final determination of whether we've gotten enough movement, if any, on those provisions? But with that, you could certainly authorize that if the council decided to do so.
Okay.
Okay, for now, I'm just going to pull it, and we can maybe discuss it, okay? All right, so, is there anybody else who'd like to pull another item? Seen none, I will entertain a motion to approve 4.1.1 through 4.1.11.
So moved.
With the exception of 4.1.8.
Sorry, with the exception of 4.1.8 and 4.1.6, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey. Councilmember Revazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes, thank you. Let's take 4.1.6 first. Consideration and possible action of a revised letter of opposition to Senate Bill 35. The reason I wanted to pull this one is because I had a concern about one of the bullet points towards the end of the draft letter, the third from the last bullet point on the last page. While I appreciate that we're trying to give some, offer some flexibility to the legislature, I'm concerned about this particular provision. Let me just read it so the members of the public have a sense. This is related to a Senate bill that would take some of the decision-making power away from the town with regard to certain types of multifamily housing. This particular bullet point reads, "Have implemented the programs in its housing element in accordance with schedule and housing element." My concern about this is that we, a few years ago, had an update to the housing element that inserted a whole lot of proposed programs with implementation schedule dates. Well, not so much dates, but implementation guidelines. And I'm concerned that if we wind up in a situation where we have to all of a sudden implement all of those, we're going to have to not only double our planning staff, but it would be, it would make for some serious marathon council meetings, and might put us in a position of having to approve things we don't necessarily, aren't quite ready to approve. Now, on the flip side, I think we need to make some changes to those programs, because I'm not sure that all of those are things that the town can implement in the way that they're currently worded necessarily. So, anyway, that was my only concern about this one. Carla, did you have any thoughts about this? Because I know you're...
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, especially considering that just recently there was a court decision back in Westchester County that found that some of the decisions that Westchester had made and that applied to other cities throughout the country have made, that they have turned out not to be discriminatory. So, I think removing that, and at some point, coming to a point when we do the housing element, to reword other things.
Right.
But I think to remove that one is very timely.
Okay. Staff have any thoughts? Todd? Okay. Any member of the public? Any thoughts over here?
Yeah, the bullet point of, "Have not reduced the density of housing project below the density as submitted by the developer on our initial application." What happens if we have some guy come in with a high-ball number, as we had when somebody said he could put 130 units over in Casabuena, but when you actually look at it, it's significantly less?
But I think that that site was not on the housing element. Aren't we specifically talking about the housing element?
No.
I mean, maybe we should clarify by saying, "on the housing element," and maybe we could also say something about the town has not, has made a good faith effort not to reduce the density, or something like that. I'll tell you what, can we just maybe approve this pending some minor edits?
Yeah, it needs polishing.
And then, Carla, can you maybe work with staff? And I'm happy to...
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any other changes you want to see?
No, I think that's good.
Okay, so let's delete that second one. The first one, we'll polish the language. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve item 4.1.6, allowing for some minor edits, as we just discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey. Councilmember Revazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes, thank you, 4.1.8. All right, Todd, you had said you wanted to pull this. Jim?
Given the wording of the resolution, I don't see anywhere in here where you're tweaking that, the language in the general indemnification would be prohibited by this resolution.
That's correct.
So, we could approve the resolution, and then you can finalize the contract, as long as you aren't changing the dollar amount?
That's correct, if the council is okay with that.
Are there any provisions of substance, other than indemnification, that are currently being negotiated?
That's the prime, this is the primary section at issue.
Okay. So, any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, 4.1.8. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 37/2017, authorizing the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies for implementation, maintenance, and ongoing support of the InCode Enterprise Resource Planning Computer System for Accounting and Administration. Sorry, I forgot to read that one. So, it's a new computer system. So, it's just indemnification and maybe a few other minor things, nothing of substance, you said, right? Beyond those, beyond the indemnification?
There is an indemnification issue. Beyond that, I don't think there's anything of substance.
Okay. So, Jim, would you not be satisfied if this came back on the next consent calendar?
I'd prefer we just take care of it now, and delegate the authority to the town attorney and the town manager to sign in the contract and try and amend it if possible, but am I correct that the worst case is we get what's currently in the contract, right?
That's correct.
I don't see any problem having this come back on a consent calendar, but if the majority here wants to approve it now, you could probably convince me.
It'll delay the contract by a month.
A few weeks. Bob?
If somebody can put together a motion that authorizes them to do that, I'm fine with clearing this off tonight, too.
Carla, you okay with that?
I think it'll take just a...
All right. Jim, would you like to make the motion, or shall I?
You can go ahead if you want.
All right. Let me outline what it is, and then maybe you can make the motion. So, I think before us is approval of Agenda Item 4.1.8, Consideration and Possible Approval of Resolution Number 37/2017, for the Tyler Technology, with an agreement with Tyler Technologies for the computer system, allowing for some minor changes to the agreement as negotiated by the town manager and town attorney.
I think the changes that you were looking at were changes to the indemnification provisions. I think that some of those, whether those are minor or not, is probably debatable. I think that the question is, are you comfortable, and do you want to present a motion that would allow us to negotiate and enter into an agreement with more favorable and toward the city indemnity provisions that are then, that are set forth in the current draft, but that if we are not able to achieve that, we would need to understand whether we need to come back.
Okay. You comfortable with that, or should we just have this come back to council?
I think at this point, for me, it's getting pretty complicated. Let's just, if it comes back to us, it'll be on the consent calendar again, and we've already spent 10 minutes talking about it.
Right. And if there are concerns about it, we can discuss it then.
I would say let's just have it come back on the consent calendar.
Okay, Jim, can we just have it on consent?
Yeah.
All right. So, we will put this off for the time being. Pull it, and you can come back next week. Thank you. Let's move on to a sanitary district item consent calendar. It's Item 4.2.1, Consideration and Possible Action to Accept Ad-Hoc Committee's Recommended Revision to the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Joint Powers Authority. This is consent calendar, but sanitary districts, so we always take the sanitary district items separate from the regular town items. Would anybody like to discuss this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Item 4.2.1.
Second.
Board Member Andrews.
Yes.
Board Member Bailey. Board Member Revazio.
Yes.
Vice President Condon.
Yes.
President first.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to public hearings, Agenda Item 5.1, Continued Public Hearing for Consideration and Possible Introduction of Ordinance 967 to amend the Town of Corder Madera Municipal Code, Section 18.08 and Section 18.24, to increase the allowable maximum portion of parcels that may be covered by structures in R1 medium-density residential zones. We have our associate planner, Doug Bush. Hi, Doug.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just really quickly, I just wanted to remind council that we had a pretty, really good conversation about this at our two meetings ago, I believe, and I thought it was a good conversation, good questions with council and the community. It was my, from my lens, my take, that I felt that council was close to making a decision of a second reading in that meeting, but that the mayor asked for additional examples to help us really fully vet this. And so, Doug has provided six examples for you to review, and I'm going to turn it over to him. Would you like him to walk you through those six examples, or answer any questions that you may have of those six examples?
I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Okay.
Quickly. Oh, my question?
Oh, oh.
Okay. Doug, I have a question. In number one, on page two, it says, "Increase lot coverage to 40 percent for R1 parcels over 4,500 square feet, and eliminate lot coverage for lots 4,500 square feet or less." What do you mean by eliminate lot coverage for lots 4,500 square feet or less?
So, when you, when you take different sized lots and you apply other standards, such as the required setbacks, those setbacks serve to already limit the lot coverage below a certain amount. So, if you take a lot that's 4,500 square feet, you're looking at five-foot side setbacks, 15-foot front setback, and 25-foot rear, which leaves you a small proportion of the lot that's still buildable. So, we found, looking at different scenarios, that lots below that size effectively have lot coverage that's already significantly reduced by those existing standards.
But are you saying that the setbacks, then, can be reduced on those smaller lots?
No, the other standards would still be in place and would serve to control lot coverage.
Oh, okay, then my suggestion would be in the resolution to maybe make it a little clearer that those lots that are 4,500 square feet or less retain their approved setbacks.
Well, all lots would, right?
Yeah, but it, where it says, "Eliminate lot coverage for lots 4,500 square feet or less," it eliminate, it's like, well, if you're not going to have any lot coverage, you're not going to have any house, and so I just thought to just clarify it. And that was my question.
All right. So, Doug, thank you for coming back. I don't, we had a really long, very thorough, I thought, discussion, as Todd mentioned last time, so if you want to kind of make this quick, and let's rush through this, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I guess just to quickly explain what we tried to do to help kind of clarify, just provide some real, real examples. Basically, just by pulling several different properties in town, most of which receive variances, which have lot coverage around 40 percent, to just kind of provide that visual, what does 40 percent look like around town? And one of the helpful things, kind of as you go through it, they're all in attachment to, I've also included them in a PDF here, if we want to call out any of them specifically. But what's helpful is that sometimes you'll see that neighboring properties, kind of, you can see the original floor plan compared to what the subject property has done as an addition. So, here, just for example, on Birch, and on Birch, there are, you know, roughly 15 properties that were identified that received lot coverage variances over time, and this is just one example. And you can see that presumably the house was that rectangle, and it's that portion that's added at the back, which exceeded the lot coverage and took it from the permitted lot coverage to what is here, just over 37 percent. So, just by, just by providing that and showing that, it also shows that, you know, you're still looking at consistent front setback throughout the block, you're looking at consistent side setbacks, which maintains that consistency of the appearance and maintains that open space and the light between houses and between the street and behind houses as well. So, as you can see, just from this one example, you know, the increase of lot coverage really doesn't eliminate a rear yard, it doesn't eliminate a front yard, it still maintains those desirable, kind of, the physical form. Yeah, and again, looking at another example on Birch, you can see a rear, the rear addition compared to those adjacent, which brought it to a lot coverage of 40 percent, which is the amount that's being proposed here and that's in the ordinance under consideration Again, just looking at, on Council Crest, another example of how something that was once, you know, that L shape has been filled in, still maintaining the side setbacks... once, you know, that L shape has been filled in, still maintaining the side setbacks. Another thing to mention, too, is that a majority, if not all of these examples, the size of the addition would also trigger design review. So what that means is that, let's say, if lot coverage were -- if these were to happen post-adoption of this ordinance, post-adoption of the 40% lot coverage, it means that they would not need to go through a variance process, but they would still need to abide by required setbacks, they would still need to abide by height, floor area, all the other standards, and they would be going through design review, which, you know, creates further opportunity for staff, for neighboring residents, et cetera, to weigh in and kind of evaluate the, you know, the appropriateness of the proposal. So, you know, again, here's an example on Golden Hind with these additions. So I won't go through them all, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have on them. But this is really, since the prior meeting, just wanted to provide some actual examples. And also, just to note that they, obviously, another thing that all these examples show is that they maintain single-story design rather than going up, which they would otherwise allowed to be allowed to do if, under the existing rules. So maintaining that consistency of form.
One question. So just to clarify that, in other words, if they were not granted the variance, they would have to put a second story on in order to get the additional square footage. That's the only way to do it, which, and these are all neighborhoods where it's almost all entirely square, single-story homes, right?
And just today, for example, to speak to that, I spoke with an architect who's working with her client, and she brought two scenarios. And she said, you know, "I'm aware that lot coverage is under consideration. Has it changed? If it doesn't change, they're looking at Scenario 1, which is adding a second story." And she was already anticipating issues with that due to view blockage and other things. So she said, you know, "The desired outcome is for them to be able to add a master bedroom to the lower, existing lower floor." So here, we're seeing an example and anticipation of those potential effects.
And just to clarify further, under the existing law, they would have to have a variance to keep it single-story, but they would not need a variance to put a second story on.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jim?
But could they put a second story on now? Now that they've built out the 40, could they put a second story on top?
This would not preclude that from being, you know, one potential scenario for them to explore. It doesn't mean that it'd be permitted by right or anything. It just, it merely expands the potential of opportunities they have to consider.
No, but I mean, the houses that are already built out, if they haven't hit their maximum far.
Yeah.
They could come in and say, "I want to add a second story."
It depends on the size of the house, the applicants or the owner's desire.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to this? See none, let's bring it back. Jim?
I'm not going to support it because we can end up with a 40% lot coverage with a second story, which is the worst of both worlds. If you wanted to come back with some sort of variance that allowed for a trade-off, I'm willing, you know, I'd support that, but right now, there's no trade-off in this legislation. It will be by right. And then if Senate Bill 35 passes, it will be a mechanized right. You'll just have to.
Doesn't Senate Bill 35 have to do with multifamily?
Okay, I want a master bedroom, I'll call it an auxiliary unit. That's two units.
My understanding is that currently, if somebody wants to add on, let's say, add on a second floor, FAR, floor area ratio limits, often apply to limit the amount of the second floor that can be added on, right? So you can't necessarily add on, necessarily out to the original footprint of the house if you're going to exceed the FAR without a variance, correct?
It's really dependent on the site and the lot size. And even furthermore, FAR is specified in R1, which is primary zone that's under consideration for these changes, is to be determined through the design review process. So even the floor area, though it may be 40% or maybe 50 or 60%, isn't a by-right amount. It's determined, you know, through the design review process, you know, what's appropriate. So that's a maximum, but it may be determined that a lower floor area. Right. And for example, what you often see is the second story, the requirement or the design approach is that you have a smaller second story than you do on the ground floor, otherwise you're going to get a two-story box, which isn't a good aesthetic there. So through the design, that's oftentimes what you'll get, and that may not be the maximum floor area for that entire lot, even at that. But it's, you know, so it's a different metric, floor area ratio, but I think the point is that there's still design review and that's the maximum, as Doug mentioned.
Carla?
Yeah, I have a comment. I'm comfortable with this, however, I almost feel like it's putting the cart before the horse. A few months ago, there were volunteers from the Planning Commission that said that they would develop some design guidelines for the Planning Commission to look at and fill in, and then ultimately present them to the council. And I was disappointed that I, I don't know what happened, but I didn't see that materialize. But what I'm saying is that we're now giving larger square footage to the house or the larger percentage. And yet, as Jim pointed out, you know, then they might build up. And so once we did have, and this was years ago, we did have guidelines that did not permit three-story houses that were building with the contour of the land. And I think it's really important that that be, that that quickly follow something like this, because otherwise, this could be a real can of worms. And so I would hope that we could continue, I mean, we endorsed at the time, the council did, that the planning commissioners do proceed with developing guidelines as a prototype for the Planning Commission to vet and then bring it to the council to do the same. And so I would hope that we would be able to fast-track that before something comes up and we've gotten ourselves into a pickle.
Bob?
Yes, couple things. First off, I support this because, most importantly, we are not changing any of the laws or ordinances that govern the appearance of the houses from the street. We're maintaining front yard setbacks, we're maintaining side yard setbacks, we're maintaining rear yard setbacks, we're maintaining height elevation guidelines, all -- we're maintaining floor area ratio. So all this really does is it forces people, allows people to develop in a way that puts the additional square footage in the back on a single level that's not going to be visible from the street. In general, that's a good thing, I think, because most of the appeals we get are based on view issues, which are caused by second-story additions. This is going to give people an option so that they don't have to do that. Additionally, if you look at the incremental change, the number change, I think, is 5% on most of these lots. It's going from like 35% to 40%. So we're not talking about, like, reinventing the wheel here. I think it's a pretty simple change. Finally, and I think this is probably the most important one, we're simplifying this for homeowners. We're simplifying the process. You know, when I moved here a long time ago, we had to put an addition onto the house, which we knew we were going to do. And if you're a young homeowner, going through the process of design review, hiring an architect, working with the planning department, even as good as ours is, it's harrowing, it's expensive, it's difficult, it's emotional, it's a whole bunch of things. We're asking people now to ask for a variance. So on top of all this other stuff you have to go through, you've got to now ask for a variance, which by its very definition is something that's not allowed, right? You have to do that. So what we're doing is, we're making it easier for people to do something and not get a variance for something that in general is going to have a positive effect. So for all those reasons, I'd support this.
Thank you. I think that's really well-stated, and I agree with everything Bob just said. I think it's important that, to recognize that the setbacks that remain are really what most people look at, look to, to ensure that the character of the community is preserved. They want to see homes a little bit back from the sidewalk. They want them a little bit back from the sides, they're not right up against the fence. They want it back from the rear property line. And you know what? The neighbors don't want the second story on their neighbor's house, creating shadows or having windows that overlook their backyard that interferes with their, the private use of their backyard. So I think this offers a good compromise that will allow homeowners to add on maybe a single bathroom or a bedroom or a home office to what really, in today's terms, are very modest-sized homes in many of our neighborhoods. So I think it is a sensible compromise, and I frankly think this is exactly the kind of change we should be making, allowing people to make these modest changes to their homes without necessarily having to put on the second story. I also wanted to point out, and Carla, I'm not sure if you saw this in the staff report, but the, and I know when you were talking about the Planning Commission, you were talking about a whole design review, kind of, a process to look at design regulations.
Correct.
But the Planning Commission did recommend this change unanimously for nothing. And I trust that they recognize that this is a sensible, modest change that will actually help our homeowners to make modest changes to properties. So I very much support this. So, that being said, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to introduce Ordinance 967 to amend the Town of Cordermadera Municipal Code in Section 1808 and Section 1824 to increase the allowable maximum portion of parcels that may be covered by structures in R1 medium-density residential zones.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews?
No.
Councilmember Bailey?
Councilmember Revazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to Business Item 6.1, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 38/2017 Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the Central Marin Fire Authority Joint Powers Agreement between the City of Larkspur and the Town of Cordermadera, and Possible Appointment of Two Members and One Alternate Member to the Fire Council. To be a little bit more concise, this is approval of the Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA Agreement, for the fire department consolidation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's my honor to give this report tonight. And if you'll allow me, I would just like to succinctly, succinctly the best I can, provide a little bit, cover some of the background here, because I think it's important. I think a lot of times, government gets criticism for doing things wrong, and I'm very proud to be part of this, very proud of the people in this room and this council for doing something right. And this is something right. This consolidation has taken a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and we're here tonight to present to council that hard work. And I would like to go back and really start with, what is our goal and why would we even consider doing something like this? And from the start, it has always been to maintain and ensure that we provide a full breadth of fire protection, paramedic, and prevention services, both in the short term and long term, and do it in a way where we can control costs and sustain the service that our communities deserve over decades. And I believe tonight we've done that. And I want to go back briefly. This is something we've talked about really for decades, going back to the 1980s and even before that. But in 2012, Cordermadera and Larkspur councils formed an ad hoc committee to explore potential new shared services opportunities between the fire departments of the two communities. The ad hoc committee consisted of two members of each council, and they met periodically over 2012 and 2013, along with senior staff of both fire agencies. These conversations resulted in an agreement to share fire personnel to ensure that the shifts were fully staffed for both the city and the town. Hoping to build on the success of that initial agreement, the committee encouraged staff to review and present additional opportunities for shared services. The next significant opportunity arose in 2015, when the fire chiefs for both Cordermadera and Larkspur announced their retirements. The town and city managers at the time agreed to fill the chief vacant, agreed not to fill those chief vacancies on a permanent basis, while staff in the committee reviewed the impact of hiring one chief to oversee both departments and potentially developing a shared command staff as well. To assist in evaluating the shared services opportunities at this time, the agencies jointly retained retired Southern Marin Fire Chief Jim Irving to conduct an analysis of both departments, and he did that. Mr. Irving developed a baseline cost estimates for what each agency would need to spend to continue operating on its own while improving fire service levels to more acceptable levels. These cost estimates were then compared to a series of staffing models that spanned a broad breadth of options. These options included sharing a fire chief, sharing command staff with or without the participation of additional agencies, and fully consolidating the two departments. After reviewing all models presented, the managers and Mr. Irving agreed the option to fully consolidate the two departments was the best choice to realize short-term service level improvements and create the ability to manage long-term cost impacts. At this point, during the first months of 2016, the ad hoc committee really took a leadership role. On our side, on the Cordermadera Council, Mayor First and Councilmember Bailey were part of that ad hoc committee. And on Larkspur's side, Catherine Way and Larry Chu. During that time, the managers with Jim Irving and the ad hoc committee initiated a parallel process to brief and engage the ad hoc committee and fire personnel about these preliminary assessments. In early March of 2016, the managers presented to the ad hoc committee a recommendation that an interim joint command be established as quickly as possible. The recommendation of the managers with supportive fire personnel was to appoint Larkspur's acting chief, Scott Shirts, to lead the joint command as acting chief of both departments. Chief Shirts is a 25-year veteran of the Larkspur Fire Department, including nine years as the deputy fire chief. Chief Shirts would be empowered to form an interim joint command by drawing upon staff from both agencies. Positions or roles to be addressed in the joint command would include acting and permanent battalion chiefs, acting fire marshal, and multiple acting and permanent fire captains. The ad hoc committee agreed with this recommendation, and a memorandum of understanding to share command personnel was prepared and presented to Cordermadera and Larkspur councils at a joint meeting on July 6th of 2016. Under that MOU, acting command members remain in the employ, employment of their respective agencies, but make operational decisions for both departments. Also at this joint meeting, the town councils received Mr. Irving's analysis and recommendation that the two departments should consolidate. The councils agreed at that time with the recommendation and determined that the ad hoc committee should begin working in ordinance on a formation of a JPA. And the councils also asked the ad hoc committees to begin holding public meetings as it worked through the issues associated with forming a JPA. And so with that, those meetings have continued over the past 12 months. Those meetings are public meetings, those meetings are video-recorded, those meetings are available on both the Cordermadera and Larkspur websites under shared services. At the same time, parallel to this process of the ad hoc committee, and again, the ad hoc committee had a clear mission. The ad hoc committee was focused on the major issues of forming a JPA, the fire chief command positions, labor agreements, PERS accounts of unfunded liabilities, and actuarial analysis, compensated absences and accruals, OPEB unfunded liabilities, fire stations, existing capital assets, equipment obligations, reserves, insurance, funding formula, name of agency, and organizational charting governance, quite a list of things to work through over the year. At the same time, parallel to this, a working group was formed. And the working group consisted of And the working group consisted of Chief Schertz with representatives of fire employees in each agency, Glenn Burkheimer and John Gray. Mr. Burkheimer is a labor relations expert, and he's negotiated agreements between Corder Medera employees and also Central Marin Police Authority. John Gray is also, represents the labor side, and he's the representative for Local 1775. The working group was charged with developing a model for sharing services so that Corder Medera and Larkspur can assess the benefits of a long sustaining arrangement. They also, the working group also negotiated what a transition documented plan would be for a potential consolidation, and a tentative three-year labor agreement. And so, I'm happy to say that currently, we have a tentative verbal agreement with the, between the working group, and that agreement is going before the labor groups for a final vote, I believe, over the next two weeks. And if that is successful, it'll go before the council of Corder Medera and Larkspur in September. So, while the details of these agreements will not be made public until that point, the question I think everyone has is, why now? Why are we talking about forming a JPA when we haven't, when we haven't determined the total cost of the JPA? And, and it would be preferable for the councils to review and approve the labor agreement prior to, or in conjunction with approving the JPA, with the JPA beginning full operations shortly after approval. However, the processes of two regulatory agencies, CalPERS and LAFCO, and I'll define what those are in a second, follow timelines that require approving the JPA agreement in August now, to meet the January 1st, 2018 start date. Because the councils and the public have not had an opportunity to review and discuss the labor MOU and other documents that will establish the full cost of the JPA, the agreement has been structured such that approval by the councils in August only creates the JPA on paper. It will not become an operating JPA until the effective date, which currently is January 1st of 2018. During the period between approval and the effective date, the councils will have the opportunity to review all financial documents in detail. If anything is not to satisfaction of both councils, the effective date can be postponed to provide time needed to reserve any concerns. With this protection in place, the managers are comfortable recommending approval of this agreement, so that CalPERS and LAFCO possess, you know, processes can begin. And if, and if you'll allow me, I'd like to just to cover what those two issues are. We've discussed them in the past and at our ad hoc committees, but I think it's important to mention them. CalPERS. Corder Medera and Larkspur provide retirement benefits through CalPERS. The JPA is an agency that is legally separate and apart from its member agencies, and employees need to transition employment status from the member agencies to the JPA. To transition existing staff to the new JPA, it is necessary to go through an application process with CalPERS. In 2013, the legislator, the legislature enacted the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, known as PEPRA, which made this transition process more complicated, because the act did not take into account the pre-2013 procedures for transitioning existing employees to a consolidated operation like a JPA. During our early deliberations, the working group came to an agreement about what should happen to transitioning employees with respect to CalPERS. The agreement is intended to preserve the long-term expectations of the employees while providing some cost containment and relief for the member agencies. In effect, all employees that CalPERS considers classic in the retirement system on January 1st of 2013 will be on the 3% at 55 formula, which is the least costly plan that meets the working group's goals. After the working group reached this agreement, the legislature enacted a bill intended to streamline the CalPERS transition process. Unfortunately, the streamlined process does not provide a path to the desired outcome of our working group. Excuse me. After reviewing the CalPERS process in detail, and consulting with the CalPERS administrator who oversees the types of transitions, staff has determined that the only way to achieve the working group's agreement is to form the JPA prior to applying with CalPERS. Because CalPERS states the application process can take 90 to 100 days, it is necessary to form the JPA now, if the application process is to be resolved or close to by January 1st of 2018. And so I'll, I'll even break it down into more simpler terms. They allowed a path where Corder Medera and Larkspur, during this application process, of how we handle our classic employees. So Larkspur employees have the 3 at 55 formula, Corder Medera employees have the 3 at 50 formula. So CalPERS is allowing us to transition all of our classic employees into this new authority under our current CalPERS agreement, so those formulas would stay the same in the new organization. However, as we talked about before, and the leadership shown amongst the fire agencies, the fire agencies are willing to continue pension reform, and reform from 3 at 50 to 3 at 55. That is not in place for CalPERS. They don't know exactly how to handle that, they wanna support us, and so in order to go through this process, we, of additional reform that is allowed, we have to form the JPA in advance and begin this application process. So this is a good thing, but it allows us to continue through the process moving forward. Keep in mind that reforming from 3 at 50 to 3 at 55 has seven-figure savings for us over the next 30 years, and it also lowers our discount rate by about 3%. This is a significant reform, and, and really critical to the consolidation moving forward. And so, this is, this, by allowing, by approving the JPA in advance, this will allow us to begin that process with CalPERS. And again, it also allows us, with any changes that CalPERS recommends between now and January 1st, we can amend, make those amendments over the next four to five months, while we work through that process with them. The second issue's LAFCO, it's the Local Agency Formation Commission. Again, we've talked about that at previous meetings in the ad hoc committee meetings, and LAFCO's a county-level agency that reviews local government with respect to issues of jurisdiction and services. In response to a fire services contract in Southern California that was controversial with the effective, with affected firefighters, the legislature enacted Senate Bill 239, known as Hertzburg, in 2016. This bill requires LAFCO approval for any fire services contract that expands the service area of an agency. It appears that the newly-formed JPA falls under this provision. As written, the bill imposes considerable cost on the formation of a fire services JPA, as it requires considerable analysis by LAFCO staff and any consultants LAFCO would retain for this review. The managers joined the fire chiefs in Marin to express concerns about imposing these costs on taxpayers when the JPA formation is not controversial with personnel. LAFCO agreed to consider adopting parameters for ministerial exemptions to review process if the agencies forming the JPA can demonstrate that it meets criteria consistent with the new law. Specifically, the JPA formation can be exempted if the LAFCO staff determines that the service boundaries of the JPA are the same as those of the member agencies. The effective labor groups have agreed to transition, to a transition plan and MOU. Three, the proposed JPA does not create conflicts with Marin-LAFCO policies. And four, the proposed JPA does not create conflicts with other plans to reorganize fire services. We meet all four of those requirements. LAFCO staff believes the process from application to issuance of a ministerial exemption will take approximately a month. The Larkspur city manager, Dan Schwartz, has taken the lead on that, and has started that process. I'd also like to thank council, or Vice Mayor Carla Condon, helping us through this process as well. But we are confident that we meet those exemption processes, and again, it'll take about a month to go through that. But again, we need a signed JPA to start that process. Some key issues addressed within the JPA agreement are covered under the analysis of this report, and I just, really quickly, a couple highlights. The new entity name, the joint powers entity created by this agreement, will formally be referred to as the Central Marin Police Authority, or, sorry, guys. Can we back that up? The new, the new joint powers agreement will be known as the Central Marin Fire Authority. Authority for the sake of historical continuity, you know, and tradition, may be informally referred to as the Central Marin Fire Department. This was an interesting conversation that we had at our ad hoc committee meeting, and I, they can speak for themselves, they're here, but I thought it was impressive. When we started to talk about the name, I always said, if we're talking about the name, we've already won. It's a good conversation to have, but sometimes it could be controversial. And in our labor group, the firefighters got together, and they were unanimous on this, based on tradition and how they felt. They, they, they supported the Central Marin Fire, and they wanted to be called the department. And so it is an authority, it is a JPA, and so the technicality of it, it, it is Central Marin Fire Authority. But for day-to-day operations, our patches, our logos, we can be, we can be, use the name and be considered Central Marin Fire Department. And so, that is in the JPA, there was much discussion over that. And again, I think the ad hoc committee really leaned on the, the labor groups. They were impressed by them being unanimous, and their support, and what they brought to the table. And so, I just wanted to point that out, and they're here and can certainly speak for themselves. Our assets. The agreement generally contemplates that the assets of the respective parties will be combined. However, there are a few items that the parties determine should remain with the different agencies. The most notable assets to remain with the member agencies will be the fire stations, which will be leased to the JPA for its operational use. Liabilities. The agreement generally contemplates that liabilities of the respective parties will be combined through the consolidation. Again, there are a few items that will remain with the individual agencies pre-consolidation, including the Marin Emergency Radio Authority, MIRA, bonds that we opened 18 years ago, and those are coming to a completion in 2021, but they'll remain with the member agencies. Other post-employment benefits, OPEB liabilities, for current retirees, pre-consolidation, they will stay with the respective agencies. CalPERS unfunded liabilities, workers' compensation claims, liability, unemployment insurance claim obligations, and pre-existing equipment liabilities. Larkspur does have a lease, a current lease obligation with one of their fire engines, and so that'll remain with the respective agencies as well. Governance. The agreement establishes a four-member fire council, with two council members from Corder Medera and two from Larkspur. On most matters, a majority vote is required. A notable exception is the approval of any cost item that will result in a mid-year increase to contributions to the member agencies. Items of this nature will require a unanimous vote. The management committee, the day-to-day management of the authority is vested in the management committee, which consists of two council members, I'm sorry, two managers, the city and town managers. And the Corder Medera and Larkspur fire employees. All Corder Medera and Larkspur fire employees will transfer to the Central Marin Fire Authority on January 1st, 2018, pending CalPERS approval, and will retain their current rate, rank, the original date of hire, for seniority purposes, and they will also carry over their accrued vacation leave and compensatory time will also transfer. The joint powers authority agreement was authored by Tom Bertrand, he's the legal counsel for the Central Marin Police Authority. The agreement has been reviewed by both labor groups, the city and town managers, and the ad hoc committee, that's attachment two of your report. Something also to, I wanna point out, the city and town attorneys are beginning their review of this agreement as well, and over the coming months, between now and January, both managers will be working with both city and town attorneys on any additional recommended amendments. And so, after we go through that process with CalPERS, LAFCO, and the city and town attorney reviews, we'll come back to council with any recommended amendments at that time. And then really, the, my point is that we are flexible, we are not locking ourselves in tonight by agreeing to this. There's many opportunities, and there will be, to continue to vet this and make any amendments as necessary. Something else I wanna point out, the fiscal impact. Adoption of this resolution carries only nominal fiscal impacts of subsequent regulatory activity. It is the intent to staff that all fiscal year 2017-18 costs are associated within the current operating budgets, and so you will not see any changes there. But one thing I do wanna note, that the town has realized the significant savings to the town's fire department labor cost for 2016-17 and 17-18, and the savings is summarized in our 2017-18 budget report. And a large portion of that savings in the fire department labor cost represents the sharing of multiple administrative supervisory positions, as well as recent retirements of the Director of Emergency Services, three battalion chiefs, and a fire chief captain. All five of those positions have been filled, and promotional opportunities have occurred over the past 18 months. In conclusion, consolidation of the Corder Medera and Larkspur fire protection, paramedic and prevention services into a single public entity will provide greater opportunity to enhance services of both communities. It will provide a more efficient organizational structure, and significant command and administrative benefits. The opportunity represents a groundbreaking partnership that allows both agencies the opportunity to enhance service delivery while controlling costs and reducing long-term liabilities. It is the recommendation of the ad hoc committee and the city and town managers that the council approve attached JPA agreement, with an effective date of January 1st, 2018. This will again allow staff to complete the CalPERS application, and allow CalPERS to ultimately make a determination of acceptance. This process will provide CalPERS and the city and town attorneys and staff time to refine the JPA document and make necessary recommendations over the next four months. And again, we provided a number of attachments for you. The first is the Resolution 38/2017 authorizing Mayor First to sign the joint powers authority agreement. The draft joint powers authority agreement is in attachment two. We provided a CalPERS public agency application questionnaire, that's, that's item three, and as well as the history of our fire services agreements in 13 and 16, and the LAFCO letter that we've sent months ago requesting exemption for review, that we believe will receive. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Would any member of the public like to speak to this? You know what to do, Jane.
Goodness, I hope. For a long time, if this time will come. Jane Levinson, Tamil Vista. Many years ago, I mentioned after one of these meetings to a gentleman who attended every single meeting, city council, planning commi, town council, planning commission, and I mentioned this word to him, and his eyes rolled, and he said, "Oh, don't ever mention it to anybody who is in any kind of government in Marin County." Well, the years went by, and consolidation took place, and combining took place. The word I used was merger. And my question was, why are we not the city and county of, the city and county of Marin? Why do we have all these little enclaves spending monies that could be consolidated and better put to use, and both the entities would possibly save money, and it would probably be to the good of the, of the, of the citizens? And so, I'm here not to dwell on the subject anymore, or to say, "Why are we not?" I just wanna tell you that this is something I really support, and I'd like to see it happen, and I know that the money saved will good, be put to better use. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? All right, seen none, I'll bring it back. Bob?
You know, I think it was over 30 years ago that Twin Cities Police was formed, which is now, of course, Central Marin Police Authority, and that has turned out to be one of the best moves this town has ever made, in terms of providing better service, but also in terms of saving us a bunch of money. Huge amounts of money. And I feel that we have a similar historic opportunity in front of us tonight. We have the opportunity to save money, we have the opportunity to provide better service, and in a day when government is so often criticized, if this isn't the definition of good government policy, I don't know what is. This is like a win-win. So, I heartily endorse this. Thanks to Diane and Sloan, and the council members from Larkspur, thanks to Todd. And I also wanna thank, most importantly though, the members of our fire services. This would not have ever happened without you guys in the firehouse getting behind this and endorsing this. So thank you very much, and I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll be supporting it, and I would like to thank the firemen for supporting it, and I wish we could call it the department, but informally, we'll call it a department.
Put her on the trucks.
Huh?
Put her on the trucks.
Oh, good, yeah.
But we will not be calling it the Police Authority. You know what? At least you knew that everybody was listening.
Okay. I went into this with much skepticism, and I wanna thank Chief Irving, Chief Schertz, and Todd Costamano, and all the rank and file, and Glenn Burkheimer, and all the people that got themselves involved in this. I feel that the pragmatics have been exhaustively discussed, as far as vetting personnel issues, and how the organization is going to develop. My only concern is that, I would hope that in the coming weeks, that the equal amount of time can be spent on vetting all the financial details that go with this, that side funds are... are reviewed, insurance funds, pension liability, all of this, so that we can really be assured that it is going to be a money-saving move rather than a cost for the communities involved. So at this point in the game, I feel that everybody has done more than their share to make me feel comfortable about the JPA. And Chief Schertz, we're always going to keep Station 13 manned.
Always.
Always. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I also live on the B side of town, so I like to hear that too about Station 13. I serve on the ad hoc, so you know, I've been going to meetings and listening to this for a few months now, and I've been very impressed with how this process has evolved from just an inkling of an idea to sharing of services to finally now creation of a JPA, and I'm really excited. I'm very pleased with how the firefighters and the union have worked so well with management in coming up with solutions to how we can move this forward, and I'm really pleased about that. Yes, it will be money-saving, but even more important than that, we will have improved services. And when, you know, Todd, you had said that in your report, but I really wanted to kind of mention to the folks that are listening, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have not had fabulous fire services. We have some of the best response times. We have the best trained firefighters and paramedics. But there are other areas that I think we will have improved services, things like fire prevention, certain management-type things, education, training, hopefully maybe some disaster preparedness-type stuff, because since we will have a larger department, we can get to those things that with a small department might have been very difficult to do when you're stretched so thin. So I'm excited about this. We're going to have to be really careful not to call it the Police Authority, you know, and CMFA and CMPA, you know, I can just foresee that that's going to be a little bit, so, yeah. So I'm really glad that management and the firefighters and the ad hoc committee could come up with the idea that colloquially it will be called the Fire Department. So that's a little easier to roll off the tongue. So, thank you all. Thank you, managers. Thank you, my fellow ad hoc committee members, Jim Irving, everybody that's been involved. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 38/2017, authorizing the mayor to sign the Central Marin Fire Authority Joint Powers Agreement between the City of Larkspur and the Town of Corder Madara.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Councilmember Rovazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor First.
Yes. Excellent.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, there was an associated item on here that we, possible appointment of two members and one alternate member to the fire council.
Yes.
So, you need this immediately today, or is this something that can wait? I mean, Sloan's not here, and he has been serving on the ad hoc. I don't know if he's interested.
We do need it to fill out the CalPERS application this week.
Got it. Okay. Who's interested? Straw poll. Who's interested in serving?
Okay. Well, I think you should continue.
Yeah, I think you and Sloan.
Thank you.
And Sloan. And if Sloan doesn't want to, I'd be happy to.
I will say that Sloan is comfortable not being on the...
Not being on it.
Yes, he's comfortable passing it on if that is the wish of the council. I can't share that.
Okay. So, I would love to do it. You want to do it, you want to do it, and you want to do it. So...
Was that all of this?
I think so.
You're popular.
Yeah.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Rock, paper, scissors? All right. I'll tell you what. Everybody give three sentences, max, why you want to do it. Starting with you, Bob.
I started working on the original ad hoc committee on this in 2012, back with its inception, with Larry and Michael Lappert, and worked on it for a long time on my previous tenure in the council and would like to step back in.
Okay. Jim?
I'd like to work with the new fire council to make certain that we capture the cost savings that we talked about while maintaining the service levels that we're used to.
Okay, and I will defer to Jim because my main interest is the finances, but that's actually Jim's expertise. And so...
Okay. Well, I'd like to be on it because I've been on the ad hoc, and I'd like to continue being involved.
So I would like to make a motion to put you, Diane, and...
Why don't we take this one at a time? Why don't we take me?
Okay, you.
If you don't mind. Okay.
You. I move to have you continue on the fire council.
Well, appoint me to the council. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Councilmember Rovazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor First.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So, Bob, you started on this, and you said 2012?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will nominate Bob for your longevity already.
If it makes a difference, I'm also an RVPA, so I'm working with fire, Ross Valley Paramedic. I've been working with fire for the past several months, too.
Jim, would you be all right being an alternate and keeping an eye on things and...
I think I'm an alternate on something else, too, aren't I?
Are you alternate on RVPA?
I think on the fire department, on the police.
Okay.
So, sure.
All right. Okay, so Carla, you made the motion?
Yeah.
To appoint Bob?
Yeah.
Get the other seat. And then would you mind amending that to have Jim be the alternate?
Absolutely.
I'll second that. I second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Councilmember Rovazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor First.
Yes. All right. Done.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Agenda item 6.2, consideration and possible introduction of ordinance Number 969, amending Section 2.04.010 of the Corder Madara Municipal Code to change the start of town council meetings from 7:30 to 6:30. Rebecca Vaughn, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. At the August 1st town council meeting, the town manager led a discussion about potential changes to the council rules and procedures. And one of the items that was discussed and agreed upon was to bring back a portion of the rules, amending the meeting start time, to have a start time of 6:30 PM and a possible end time of 9:30 PM with the option to extend by half-hour increments, with a majority vote required to continue to 10 PM and a unanimous vote required for each half-hour increment beyond that. In order to revise the town council meeting start time, it requires a revision of our ordinance. So that's why we are asking to amend Section 2.04.010 of the Corder Madara Municipal Code. The council rules and procedures are still in progress, and will be brought back, most likely, the September 19 agenda. But in the meantime, in order to facilitate this getting underway, since an ordinance change is a two-meeting process, we wanted to introduce the ordinance at this time with one slight modification requested to the ordinance, as we discussed earlier. There is an error in the, where it says, "Section 2.04.010 is further amended to allow council to reschedule a regular meeting to another date as needed." That should have been inserted into the staff report and not the ordinance. The ordinance portion should read, "Council may reschedule a regular meeting to another date as needed." Is that correct? Okay. And this is inserted because it may be necessary at some point for council to determine that a meeting that has been canceled due to a holiday or some other reason, they might want to reschedule it. So it can meet at a different date that week or the next week, but we needed to have a provision in there to allow council to reschedule a regular meeting. Did I cover that? Okay, thank you.
Any questions of staff?
No.
No? Any member of the public like to speak to this? Seen that. I'll bring it back for consideration. Jim?
I'd like a further amendment, which is the paragraph above it where it says, "Regular meeting at a time." Instead of saying earlier, say different, 6:30.
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
What are you looking at?
Paragraph of...
204.100.
In the event that the council...
wishes to conduct a closed session or consider other items at a regular meeting at a time different than the 6:30 PM.
Okay. I don't think that is a problem, is it? Okay.
Okay. I'll move to approve ordinance Number 969 as directed by Rebecca and as amended by Councilmember Andrews.
Yes. I'll second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Councilmember Rovazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor First.
Yes. All right. Yay, 6:30. Good. Hopefully we won't have these midnight meetings anymore. All righty, moving on. Agenda item 6.3, presentation and discussion of options for banning or regulating cannabis businesses and cultivation of cannabis for personal use and possible direction to staff. Todd, would you mind checking the thermostat? I don't think the air conditioning's coming on.
Can you just, here, do you want me to...
Yes, Sloan's not here to do that for us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, while we wait for the PowerPoint to get set up, would you like us to start that, even though we have, I believe, a second reading? Would you like to start the 6:30 start time at the next meeting?
If we can do that.
We can do that.
Your current ordinance allows you the flexibility to change the time on a meeting-by-meeting basis before you officially change sort of the regular time. So it's within your discretion to go ahead and have it at 6:30 if you want to go ahead and do that. This does require two readings and 30 days before it takes effect officially, but you, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, could change it to 6:30.
I think that'd be fine unless there's any objection.
I'm fine. I just, can we just make sure, can I make a suggestion?
Public?
Yes.
Yes, notify the public.
Make sure that we put a big notification, "Please note news start time, 6:30," you know, and we make sure that, we do everything we can in terms of outreach to make people know that we're starting earlier.
Put it on Nextdoor, put it on the reader board, whatever you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should also add that I will need to publish a notice of cancellation in lieu of an agenda for our September 5 meeting that we canceled due to its proximity to Labor Day. So when I do that, I'll start off with a notification attached to that, that the September 19 meeting will begin at 6:30, and I will publish notices in all my usual places.
Thank you. Madam?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. So tonight, we're going to kick off, I think, what may be the first of maybe a few discussions we have on this topic. But really, the intent of tonight's agenda item is to have a high-level discussion about sort of some major decision points or not, some major approaches to regulation of both commercial and, I'm sorry, commercial and personal marijuana use. We're calling it, we use sort of that term interchangeably a little bit. I think the acts, now we're all on the same page in calling it cannabis, but you'll see in the presentation, we also talk about it as medical and recreational marijuana, so some terminology. But again, a high-level presentation. I think it's meant to be an opportunity for the council to really ask some questions about the, some of the statutory background and get into some of the issues that we'll be presenting tonight, and ultimately, some of the decisions that we are going to ask the council to make in the future, and hopefully provide some direction to staff this evening about next steps for staff to undertake in preparing possible ordinances or other measures for your review. So quickly, there's a number of points. This looks like a lot. I'll try to go through it a little bit more. We did prepare a pretty, I think, a pretty thorough staff report that covers...
Great report.
...a number of the items we want to get through tonight, and this is sort of a summary of that, the presentation, and starting with the statutory background. So in brief, obviously, this goes back to 1996, and really, when medical marijuana was first voted on for use in California, Prop 215. Up until about 2015, most of the legislation was related to medical marijuana and sort of clarifying some of the intent of those pieces of legislation and the regulatory framework at the state level. Ultimately, in 2015, the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act was adopted, which tried to, I think, bring into conformance a number of different regulations that were out there on medical cannabis. So that was in 2015, and the last, the last time, sort of, the council looked at, and I'll get into that a little bit, looked at its own actions in relation to medical marijuana. So a couple of things to note, in Corder Madara, the town council adopted ordinance 933 on November 20, 2012. That was specifically related to medical marijuana dispensaries, and that use was prohibited throughout town and is currently in the zoning ordinance. So that was an ordinance adopted by the town at that time. It broadly defined medical marijuana dispensaries, but wasn't, didn't specifically get into other medical marijuana-related business activities such as deliveries and cultivation at that time expressly. However, with, we came back to you in January of 2016 after that last Medical Marijuana, Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act was passed in 2015, and the town council affirmed, at that time, we recommended that the council affirm that commercial cultivation of medical marijuana was prohibited as well by permissive zoning rules of our zoning ordinance. This is sort of somewhat, I won't call it moot, I mean, these are obviously on the books, but we're, in a sense, reconsidering some of these at this time now that, I'm sorry, there's new legislation that has passed since January of 2015. Obviously, what happened, the most recent legislation was Proposition 64 in November 2016, where the voters passed the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which legalized the use of marijuana for individuals 21 years and older. And I don't, I'm not going to go through all of the different... all of the different regulations under that act, but these are some of the major points. Legalized it for individuals 21 years and older, up to, legalized it, allowed individuals to have up to an ounce for possession, transport, and use, smaller quantities for concentrated forms of marijuana. There are some restrictions in terms of where that use is allowed, and the point we'll be focusing on down below is that no sales without a state license. So since the passage of that act, there's been a lot of new regulation or the state has been coming up with new legislation. I should say it was, it was adopted, I think the governor signed the bill on June 15th, 2017, which, this new acronym, which I won't even begin to try to, you know, I think it's a long, it combines basically the first three words are medical and adult use, and so it combines both medical and the adult use of marijuana under a single regulatory scheme. And this includes licensing 19 categories of commercial businesses from seed to sale, so to speak, and the licensing of those businesses is set to begin in January of 2018. So one of the goals here is to discuss this evening how to prepare for that eventuality in January of these new legal forms of marijuana businesses going into effect. So one of the ways that I think we've tried to distill a lot of information is to think of, think of this topic in terms of the commercial activities that are sort of going to be under the purview of the town and what the town can do about commercial activities in Corte Madera, and then personal activities, separate personal activities as a separate item, and then there's also sort of this in-between mobile deliveries concept. So there's sort of these three main areas in which we're trying to distill this. So in terms of commercial activities, for both medical and recreational marijuana, local agencies may permit, regulate, or prohibit commercial activities related to those medical and recreational marijuana businesses. The League of California Cities has advised that permissive zoning won't work in this case, to rely on that, it's not a good idea that we should, if something is intended not to be allowed in Corte Madera, that should be expressly written into the, an ordinance. And one of the things, one of the changes, I think, from the medical regulatory scheme that was previously adopted by the state or enacted by the state to the current act is that businesses are not required to prove local, that they have local permission, in essence, they will go to the state and seek permission for licenses at the state, and if it's prohibited at the town, that will clearly, that's the way that they're going to know that they shouldn't be given a license. Again, it's, the fourth bullet is just another reiterating, local agencies must act to regulate or prohibit the onus is on the town, and as I mentioned before, town only prohibits medical marijuana dispensaries at this time. So that's sort of an outline of the commercial activities. In terms of personal activities, currently, individuals who are qualified patients under the 2015 provisions of the Medical Marijuana and Safety Act, they're allowed to have up to 100 square feet for personal cultivation, and primary caregivers with five or fewer patients up to 500 square feet for cultivation. So, someone, someone else is weighing in over here.
Is that the backroom?
Who knew he was paying attention to our live stream?
He's everywhere.
Yeah, he's everywhere.
But in essence, these, these rules have been in place since January 1st, 2016. Oh, plus five. In terms of personal activities related to recreational use, up to six plants are allowed per residence, per home, for personal cultivation, they must be secured or not visible to the public for indoor cultivation. Outdoor cultivation can be permitted or regulated or prohibited, and then indoor cultivation may be reasonably regulated with certain criteria, and those are, tried to list some of those in the staff report, which may be applicable in certain cases. Another important note is that property owners, landlords may prohibit personal possession use or cultivation activities on their properties, and in effect, these, these provisions...
I don't know what that means. Anyway, I can search the web for it.
Another commenter.
This might be a commission for you. I don't want to turn on one of those. I don't know what that means.
And those, these rules have been in place since November 8th, 2016, since the act passed, or Proposition 16, 64 passed. And then, in relation to mobile deliveries for both medical and recreational marijuana, the town, just want to point out, the town cannot prohibit through transportation on roadways, but the town may prohibit deliveries to locations within Corte Madera, although, as we noted in the staff report, that's something that we note is very difficult in terms of the delivery, deliveries of marijuana to enforce. And then, so what we've done is, and I've listed here several of the discussion points, these are just pulled, the discussion points that we listed in the staff report out on a couple of slides, if that's helpful for everybody. I did want to also, one of these questions speaks directly to the idea of an urgency ordinance and the need perhaps to come back with that on the table, given the time, some of the time constraints that, or some additional study or analysis that the council may desire that we come back with. You know, I think we're, we may be positioned, depending on which way the council provides direction here, to move quickly to do some, if it's very clean-cut, the direction we get, we may be able to move quickly and avoid a urgency ordinance. Even in that, we think is, is pushing it, and it might be just wise to give more time to discuss this and consider it, and therefore, an urgency ordinance may be appropriate. So with that, I have, we've listed some of these discussion points, again, thinking of these three main items. Commercial operations, I mean, at a high level, we're asking for direction on whether or not the town council wants to prohibit all marijuana-related commercial activities, both medical and recreational. That will obviously be a more simple process, or is there an exploration of regulating commercial cultivation, all the different businesses? That would be something we would, obviously, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we could come back and discuss those more at length, including ideas of taxation and other policies that the council might want to consider if indeed it does want to explore allowing some commercial businesses. There's the idea of deliveries, that's another item that we're looking for some direction on. Does the town council want to prohibit or regulate mobile delivery businesses from delivering medical marijuana within town? And that actually goes for not only medical marijuana, but for recreational marijuana as well. And again, we raised some concerns about enforcement on that issue that we're happy to talk about some more. In terms of personal activities, it really boils down to, at this point, personal cultivation. Does the town council wish to impose reasonable regulations on personal cultivation of up to six plants within a residence or detached structure on the property? And does the town want to regulate or prohibit outdoor cultivation for personal use? Those are the personal activities that we're looking for some direction on. And then, the urgency ordinance, which I, which I discussed previously. So with that, I'll, I'll close unless any of my colleagues want to add anything at this time.
I think the one, the one item I would like to clarify, and I think can be a little bit confusing, is the concept of a mobile delivery. There, businesses can operate, if they get the requisite state license, that would have a, essentially, a brick-and-mortar, a site location perhaps outside of Corte Madera, that might provide a mobile delivery services to retail customers in Santa Rosa. So it's a little bit like the pizza guy. You might have a pizza place outside, perhaps in San Rafael, perhaps in San Francisco, that would then deliver the product to a customer that is residing or in, within the jurisdiction of the town. And so when we're talking about regulating mobile deliveries, we're not talking so much about the zoning of the brick-and-mortar. That would fall under whatever commercial zoning requirements that you impose on other businesses. But we're talking about, do you want to allow a company that has a business operation in sight outside of the jurisdiction from coming, bringing their product and delivering it to a customer who might like to have a cannabis product delivered to them at their home or at their business or some other place in Corte Madera? So I just wanted to clarify, that's what that issue was about.
And then, I'd like to ask for clarification about the urgency ordinance. If I'm understanding this correctly, because the provisions of this state law go into effect January 1, and because our current ordinance would not be enforceable after January 1, if we do not, if we choose to regulate this, but we don't get it done by January 1, we risk possibly having a window where anything goes, that is why you're recommending that if we can't get anything in place January 1, and if we choose to implement some regulations, that we get an urgency ordinance passed so that we're covered while we kind of iron out and get this approved?
Right. Well, one point of clarification, so I think the current ordinance that we do have on the, on the books related to medical marijuana dispensaries, that's, that would stay. I mean, that, that would still be in effect after January 1, 2008. But any of the other, basically, a private businessperson could go to the state and seek a business license with the state, and if we didn't have anything, after January 1st, 2018, and if we didn't have anything prohibiting that activity, a license could be granted and they could begin to operate in town during those periods.
For instance, for recreational, whereas ours only deals with medical.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Carla?
Yeah, I've gone to a lot of meetings at the league about this, and I had requested this come up before us at the beginning of this year because we're down to the wire as this goes, and what happens, just, to just say it more bluntly than Adam did, is that once we hit January 1st, anything goes unless we don't have an ordinance in place. We have, we lose all local control of this issue. And so I think it's important that we, you know, really go full force to come up with something rather than us losing control over this whole topic.
Madam Mayor, if I may, because, so, and this was my decision to wait to this point because I thought it was important for us to get an idea of what is happening up and down the state, and we now have in some of the attachments, what other jurisdictions are doing, because I think it's important to know, like, best practices and the best way to approach. The important thing about the urgency ordinance, we have that in our back pocket at any point, and really, if we're going to decide tonight that the council would like to regulate or make some major regulations regarding cannabis, that it is our recommendation to pass this urgency ordinance that'll allow us time going into 2018, and it gives us much time to go through the planning process, back to council, have community engagement, and make any regulations that we so wish. And so, we are not under any, we have plenty of time to do what we need to do and to protect us to go through any processes that we want, but I just felt like, since you mentioned it, that it was important that I do point out that I think we wanted to know what was going on up and down the state and allow the league to also provide some additional information of things that are happening and give us some best practices and tools in our toolbox. And so, this presentation, I think, is helpful because it breaks it down into really four conversation points for us as we go through this. And, and so I just wanted to mention that to you. But again, we have plenty of time because we have this urgency ordinance in our back pocket that we can use, and if we are going to do any regulations, I'll just tell you it, I'll be there too, that the town attorney is going to recommend that we do enact that ordinance now to provide us time to go far into 2018 with this discussion.
Yeah, because then we can amend it.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I'm in support of that. I've just been real nervous all along about getting something on the books.
Yes.
Well, I was, yeah, attachment, I was just going to say attachment three. I think a lot of our local, I've been speaking to local colleagues on this as well, and a lot of other jurisdictions are sort of also in the same place that we are. I don't think we're behind. I think we're just, we're at the same sort of decision point. A lot of folks are waiting, waiting to see how this shakes out a little bit elsewhere. But again, and I think we will see other jurisdictions also going with an urgency ordinance to allow them more time.
There's, was also recent legislation that was an effort to sort of, in just June of this past year, that was an effort to try to pull the regulatory framework for medicinal and recreational use together and make it a little bit more consistent, that provided even more additional guidance. So I do think that one benefit of doing this now rather than perhaps six months, months ago, is some of the rules are a little bit more defined. We now know that the state will be likely issuing licenses starting in January, but it will be issuing them for both recreational and medicinal, and I think that there's just a little bit more clarity with what we are anticipating coming from the state at this point. A moratorium, we would need to bring it back to you, but that could be brought back to you at the, at your next meeting. I'm saying that without getting the thumbs up from your, from your town manager, but it's a relatively straightforward process. It is a two-step process. You would see it back again in a fairly quick turnaround. There's just a very regimented way. It has to proceed under the government code, but it's something that you, that you could do, you can adopt, and essentially, it's a total ban on whatever activity you want to ban, and the intent is, it's really a bit of a Band-Aid measure to allow you the time to have a more full, thoughtful, public process to come up with whatever nuanced approach you may or may not want to take. Zoning amendments do need to go, as you well know, through your planning commission, and then would need to come back to the council for a minimum of two readings. And so, that allows you the time to, to provide that process. It could be that it would take more time at the planning commission, it may take more than two meetings in front of council. It, it, it really depends on what the needs are in the community to discuss the issue. And so, if you do adopt a moratorium, you sort of preserve your ability to come up with either perhaps a permanent ban later or a more nuanced, thought-out regulatory approach if that's, if that's the intent of the council. Jim?
If we do nothing, and then in March, we decide we want to do something, will we be prohibited from doing that?
You're not prohibited from doing it. So on the commercial side, I'm going to separate this out for a little bit. On the commercial side, when it comes to brick-and-mortar business establishments who that have a physical location, so I'm, again, setting aside that sort of separate category of mobile deliveries from businesses outside coming in. of mobile deliveries from businesses outside coming in, you would not be precluded. You could certainly later adopt and amend your zoning ordinance. The problem is, however, that the only current ban you have is as to medical dispensaries. And so if a business that was not a medical dispensary, it could be a recreational dispensary, it could be another business, a manufacturer, testing lab, there's, you know, there are 19 different categories of licenses. If anything other than a medical dispensary comes to Corder Madera, I'm sorry, comes to the state, the state would issue that license, because there would be no regulatory scheme precluding it, and you would then be in a non-conforming use situation. You could later adopt regulations, but for businesses who are already here, you're in a little bit of a stuck position. And so if you want to make sure that you're not in that position, a moratorium would allow you to put what is a temporary ban. It lasts for 45 days. Staff would need to come back. You can't complete this process in 45 days. And you would then, if you wanted to extend it for another 10 and 1/2 months, which gives you a full year, it can then be extended again for another year, but I suspect you would be, well, one year would give you plenty of time to get through your planning commission process and get back to council and adopt permanent zoning change. So that's the position you would be in. As to mobile deliveries, you have to be express. The law is very clear that unless there is an express ban on the books saying you cannot deliver cannabis within our jurisdiction, that it's allowed. You would not be in a non-conforming use situation, because again, you're not, you wouldn't be looking at brick and mortar. You would be looking at someone coming from outside of the jurisdiction to deliver within the jurisdiction. The brick and mortar issue, it goes back to my initial conversation about any business would be allowed to establish here unless you have a regulation. As to personal grows, the outdoor grows that we talked about that could be banned, you would, right now, you don't have a ban. It's been legal to grow since last November. Folks may have planted. The harvest season, I believe, is coming up. I believe it's in the fall. And so if you decide to impose some regulations later on, you can impose those regulations. We're not, you wouldn't be in a non-conforming use situation, because you're talking about residential use. So there is some risk. It's not a risk that you can't later adopt, but there is some risk with businesses, that you may be stuck with a business that you can't get rid of.
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding that if you don't come up with an ordinance at the end of the year, by January 1, at the end of the year, and someone comes in and they want to have a garden full of marijuana, you can't say anything. It's all, the state has virtually approved everything. And that's why it's so important to get some kind of pretty strict ordinance in place and then relax.
We'll get to deliberations in a little bit and opinions, but any other questions for staff at this point? I have a question. So I'm sensing some interest in pursuing the urgency ordinance. So assume for a second that we go ahead and direct you to come back with an urgency ordinance, just to afford us some time. Tonight, are you wanting direction on these four discussion points?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it still would be helpful to hear from the council its views on direction on those items, because this is, it's high level, but I think we can get underway with some of our additional work that may be necessary if we have some direction from the council on those.
Okay. And these discussion points are in the staff report on pages six, seven, eight, and nine in the box.
Right. And I've copied them up to the slides. If you wanted to go through one by one, we could do that.
I think it would be worthwhile to do that. At this point, I think I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Can I just ask a process question?
Yes.
Are we going to have public comment on all the discussion points? Or are you going to have public comment on each discussion point? Or how are we going to do that?
Oh, on all of them? Should I wait on public discussion until after we discuss the individual discussion points? Or can I have public comment now?
I think you can do it either way. I would suggest that you probably have one public comment opportunity on everything, so that each individual can stand up and have their time in the entirety of the conversation.
Okay. So I'm going to have public comment now, since we've, staff has already discussed what the discussion points are. We've talked a little bit about the urgency ordinance and what the process might be that we follow with that. So now's the time, folks, if you want to speak. I'm guessing there are at least two of you who want to speak, so you know what to do. Hello, Jane.
Thank you. Again, Jane Levinson, Tamil Vista. And thank you, members of the council and Madam Mayor. Thank you for all the times that I have been permitted to come up here and speak and express my opinion. This one is the most dear to my heart and has been so since 1965, when a friend of mine said to me, as I visited her dying in the hospital, "Why the hell didn't you stop me from smoking?" And she died from lung cancer. So I got into the tobacco prevention situation, and I don't like to toot my own horn, but I was the one that finally, that finally got the board of supervisors to ban smoking in their boardroom, after they divided it in half with no separation, just half of you can smoke and half of you can't. And the smoke came over here and went over there, and it was a big joke. And then in the cafeteria, I was able to get the first three rows to ban smoking, but the cafeteria didn't know from smoke, so the smoke went back to the other 10, 15 tables, and everybody got cigarette smoke. And I've been on the cigarette ban ever since, and I've had great successes. I was the one that got seized candy, two weeks after they got my letter, to put a sign up and says, that said, "Thank you for not smoking." Well, I feel that way about marijuana. As far as I'm concerned, you can prohibit everything in the first two sentences. If people want to smoke marijuana, if they want to, who's going to count the plants? Are we going to have a border now with a guard there that's going to count, stop every truck and search them coming in to see if they're making a delivery of marijuana to somebody in Corder Madera? Corder Madera, stay out of the marijuana business. Let some other community do it. Unless you want the money that's going to come into the coffers, and there will be a lot. But the states that are now allowing marijuana, Colorado, for instance, they've already been able to come up with a test for drivers, and they can spot now, within a few minutes, rather than several days, who was driving that car that was in the accident and were they involved with marijuana. So fast they came up with a test, and now there is one. And I think that California is going to rue the day when they said recreational and medical marijuana is okay, as are the rest of the states in this country, and maybe enough people in this country who will realize, after all the years that were spent banning smoking and tobacco, and have seen the monetary consequences of that product, will see the same thing with the use of marijuana. And as far as medical marijuana is concerned, Germany has controlled it very well. You have to have a prescription that you take to a pharmacy. And to call it a dispensary, are these people who are running, are they pharmacologists? Have they been to pharmacology school? Do they know what they're dispensing? And do people know what's in the stuff that they're eating? Because now that's going to, where you're going to find a lot of the marijuana in food stuffs, cookies, and children are going to start bringing it home, and they don't know that there's marijuana in the school, in the cookie that mama made last night, and it's delicious, and try it. You know, this is really something that we could nip in the bud and let Corder Madera be the first to say no to all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Gurbosi, 111 Parkview Circle in Corder Madera. And I'm assuming, no pun intended, about nipping it in the bud. I don't have near that much content, but maybe I do. I urge the council to be as limiting as possible now, as it will be easier to become less restrictive later on than it will be to go the other way of becoming more strict, which is basically, I think, what you're saying with the urgency ordinance, is like, lock it down, nail it down, do, say, give away as little as possible, and then you can have a measured response afterwards. The second thing that I wish to say, and I was here when we had the whole blah, blah, blah about medical marijuana and that Corder Madera needed to provide dispensaries, and there were people that came from freaking Ukiah, that came here and said, "We needed to be able to sell pot so people from the whole Bay Area could buy weed in Corder Madera." So we do not need to sell pot for people. We do not need to be the source. You know, there's a whole raft of businesses that Corder Madera doesn't have, and this is one of them that we might, we don't have a stationary store. I'd rather have a stationary store than a pot dispensary, but that's basically it.
And paper.
Paper source. What else don't we have? Never mind. So that's. Thank you.
A Denny's.
And just a reminder that we do limit comments to three minutes, and we've got a timer going. So, thank you.
Lucinda Smith, Corder Madera. I want to support what the ladies before me have presented. I think that we need to be very prohibitive in all phases of these new laws.
Is the microphone working?
I think we need to be as prohibitive as possible. I think that, yes, we're going to give up some tax income, but I think that it's more than worth it. We're going to have a lot of enforcement issues. We're going to have a lot of issues that we're going to have to deal with, whether or not we prohibit it, but even more so if we allow it. So I would encourage the council to put as restrictive measures in place to prohibit the dispensary, the transportation, the delivery, the mobile aspect. Then we're going to have drones coming in and doing that delivery. You know, so it has to be, I think, very specific, but I encourage you to be very protective of our town. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this? Seeing none? All right, let's bring it back and start working through this. Let's do one decision point at a time, starting with the.
Can you start on page nine? Because I think the legal is controversial.
Page nine, discussion point. Does the town council wish to adopt a temporary moratorium to continue to prohibit all marijuana-related commercial activities, both medical and non-medical, while the town explores permitting and/or regulating those businesses? Second bullet point. Does the town council wish to adopt temporary moratorium to prohibit personal outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, while the town develops regulations either prohibiting or conditionally permitting personal outdoor cultivation? And again, that's for recreational. We're not talking about medical, because, now, is medical outdoor cultivation allowed under state law, correct?
You can ban it. You can ban it.
Right.
You can ban any outdoor cultivation that you like.
What I just noted in our staff report, bottom of page eight and top of page nine, we did note that it's been that personal outdoor, sorry, cultivation, both personal and medical, has been allowed for more than a year or so. We think there may be some advantage to see what, if any, issues come up before going ahead and banning those things. But obviously, happy to hear direction from the council on that.
Okay. And I'd like you to look into that crystal ball of yours, if you can, and give me a sense, if you're able to, of how commercial marijuana, the commercial marijuana industry is likely to be different than what we're seeing in the medical marijuana industry. Medical marijuana, I mean, we're seeing pretty much is limited to dispensaries and deliveries. You've got marijuana plus a whole lot of edibles and other types of products. Are we anticipating that commercial marijuana is going to be in your Safeway and in your Rite Aid, I mean, in cafes? What are we really thinking about here?
When you say "commercial," do you mean "commercial/recreational"?
Yes.
Because there's also "commercial/medical."
Commercial/recreational. Okay.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, it would be good to hear from, you know, it's obviously, I've seen certain locations, obviously, Washington and Denver and Colorado already have that in place. I mean, what I see in more of the, I would say, suburban or urban areas, it is limited more to the retail side of things. But the retail can take many forms, so I don't, you know, it's going to, I think it's hard to say exactly where it goes, but I don't think you're going to see Safeway having an aisle for marijuana, for example. I think a large amount of it, though, as you see the industry taking off, I think there are opportunities for it to fill in some of the, whether it's warehousing, or office, or testing, or those sorts of uses can fill in around areas such as Corder Madera. And there's also clearly bigger changes on the way from agricultural areas in Northern California and whatnot. But that's, you know, it's hard, it's a good question. I mean, I don't know exactly where the industry goes in terms of merchandising, but at this point, they've been self-selected sort of individual businesses, starting up with that sole purpose.
Can I, can I?
Yes.
We do a lot of work on this, and I'm the chair of the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, and we've been monitoring this very carefully for several years, exactly what's going on in Colorado. And in answer to your question, imagine a Best Buy, except instead of selling electronics, they're selling various forms of marijuana. So it can be anything like that, right? From plants to edibles, smoking mechanisms, to smaller boutique-type things that you might find in a mall, and you're walking down the mall, and there's a nice little store, except it's selling fashion, it's selling high-end marijuana products. So you have to imagine it in that context, and everything in between. So that's the kind of form that it's taking. And, you know, we're obviously going to be a candidate for it, because if you're going to open a commercial store for marijuana in Marin County, you want to be in the middle of the county next to the freeway, right? So we would be a very likely candidate if you wanted to open a store for marijuana.
Thank you. All right. So we've.
Drive-through.
We've got two bullet points here. The first one, again, is related to a temporary moratorium to continue to prohibit all marijuana-related commercial activities, both medical and non-medical. Thoughts on that? I think that's something that I would definitely support for a temporary moratorium.
I would, too.
Okay. I thought I saw a slight nod, Jim. Okay, so that appears to be unanimous. The second bullet point. Does the town council wish to adopt temporary moratorium prohibiting personal outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana? So this is outdoor cultivation of recreational. Now, currently, outdoor cultivation, for medical reasons, is allowed.
Both are actually allowed, and it should, under the current law in Corder Madera, it's both allowed.
Okay.
Not medical, medical.
Both are allowed. The moratorium is based on a health and safety, urgency based on health, welfare, and safety. And it is given, given that you don't know what this industry would bring, and given that you may ultimately want to ban this type of industry, and you need the time to go through a planning process, that would be the basis for commercial. There is no non-conforming use situation that would apply to the personal grow, whether it's medicinal or non-medicinal. And so the basis for a moratorium would not be as compelling for the personal grows. And also, I think staff is suggesting that council may want to consider sort of what this first growing cycle looks like from a nuisance standpoint, which is often what causes jurisdictions to want to ban it, if they do want to ban outdoor grows, is because of either the, any crime associated with harvest, or odors that may be associated with outdoor cultivation. with harvest or odors that may be associated with outdoor cultivation.
Now, if we fail to implement a moratorium on commercial recreational retail operations, for instance, and something opens up between, say, January and March, like we discussed earlier, they would be allowed in. Personal grow is not the same, because it's harvested and it would require replanting. So, if we came back...
You can have a ban, and folks would have to rip out what they're doing. It's not a business.
Because then, they might sell it.
Okay. And then, my other question about this, the non-medical versus medical. Are we anticipating the continuation of the medical cannabis card program and doctors' recommendations or prescriptions, or whatever you want to call it, ongoing after the first of the year?
There's a difference in taxation from a retailer's standpoint. The retailer, there is a tax imposed, a sales tax imposed by the state on non-medicinal sales. That does not apply to medicinal sales. So, the card, it may, it could be that it'll, how it's implemented may be changed, improved, modified over time, but the concept of folks having some sort of way to show that their purchase is for an authorized medicinal use will remain.
Just like their personal grow, if we allow, for instance, medical grows to continue, we could differentiate between that and, say, recreational.
You could. I think that town manager may have some thoughts about enforcement on that.
Got it. Okay.
Are we aware of any outdoor cultivation in town now?
Not personally, no.
Okay.
Todd.
That's a Redwood High School.
It's out there. It's not a, honestly, it's a difficult enforcement issue for us. I'll give you a couple of examples. In the last 10 years, we had a known seller locally, and he had 150 plants. We ended up getting a search warrant. We removed all the plants. We got sued. We had to return all the plants and all the equipment, and we lost the lawsuit. Same thing happened again two years later. Went through the process with the district attorney's office, got a search warrant, removed 150 plants and all the equipment, got sued, lost, and had to return all the plants. Fast forward now to today. Law enforcement doesn't touch, there are certain requirements that you have to meet to touch marijuana. And what we're talking about here is an outdoor grow of six plants. I'm telling you that it's almost impossible to enforce. Now, can we with our local ordinances? Absolutely. But as a town manager, am I going to direct the police chief to enforce that? It's going to be a very difficult threshold for us to meet. And so, I'm just concerned about it. And one thing I just encourage the council to consider, and not that it's not enforceable, we can absolutely do it, but I'm going to tell you, we're going to be on the losing side probably of this thing, especially when we're enforcing an ordinance and not even federal and local, you know, state regulations. It's going to be a tough one for us to meet. And I know the town attorney has a lot of experience, too, with Santa Rosa, and he may want to add to it, but we're talking about six plants. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult for us. So, one of the things that we talked about, and we looked at other local jurisdictions, it's almost, and again, this is a harvest, I think the mayor touched on it, it's almost possibly, maybe consider a wait-and-see, and see if it becomes an issue in our neighborhoods of odor and other things. That is our concern. And if we had to, we could always come back again on the next harvest, and we could put in regulations. Again, on the other side, we can certainly say no to it and take it a case-by-case. I mean, it's always nice to have something on the books when you do have a neighborhood issue, that we have something on the books that we could actually take action on. I just think it's going to be, become a very difficult enforceable type of issue, and I'm concerned about it.
And I would just like to add one quick thing. And this isn't a question of whether anybody can grow marijuana or not on their property, because there's not, the law allows indoor grows, and you can't prohibit that as a town. So, it's more like the location of that on somebody's property is what is really the discussion.
I also wanted to clarify that your ability to say no to outdoor, if someone were to violate it, if you adopted a ban that said you can't grow outdoor for personal use, and an individual were to violate that, that becomes a code enforcement issue for the town. State law preempts your ability to make that a crime. So, under state law, it's not a crime to grow six plants per resident, per residence, whether that's indoor or outdoor. And so, it wouldn't, it wouldn't become a police matter. It would become essentially a code enforcement matter.
Which is our police department.
Where was that?
Which is our police department.
But they're enforcing essentially code and not criminal laws, so it becomes even more challenging.
Got it. So, Todd did not say that on mic, but it becomes the police department's responsibility to enforce the code.
I still bring us back to the issue at hand of past history and experience that, okay, when you remove someone's plants and equipment, or whatever you do, you're going to be in civil court. And that's where we ended up as a law enforcement agency on two occasions. And I'm, and we're still back to what I'm talking about as an issue. It's not necessarily, can we, can we, you know, charge them with a crime? It's, we're putting ourselves out there civilly on some laws that are being passed at a much higher level. We're opening ourselves up to liability. It's all I'm saying. And I just want us to see it and understand what's at stake. That's all.
So, to clarify, I think, would you guys, if I'm hearing you guys correctly, you're saying we probably shouldn't worry about a moratorium on trying to regulate this particular issue, because there's other stuff we need to be thinking about that's much bigger and more important than that we can and should be enforcing?
That is my recommendation, yes.
No. But what we just discussed regarding the commercial activities included commercial-sized grows, anything beyond six plants? So, really, this particular discussion is just about the six plants?
Yep. I think "commercial" versus "personal" is sort of the way to...
Got it.
So, "commercial," yes, I think we got clear direction on that. We're talking about the personal ones.
There is a little in-between. So, under MRSA, which was the 2015 law that regulated medical, tried to bring the medical cannabis community out and regulate them. The definition, that law only regulates commercial, commercial businesses. But the definition of what constitutes commercial when it comes to cultivation is essentially 100 plants or more by a patient, or 500 or more by a caregiver. And so, if you, if you go above that, the state considers you to be commercial, whether or not you have a business or not. That's considered to be commercial. If you fall below that, so if you're under 100 plants, states can, it's a, I'm sorry, square feet, state, the local jurisdiction can say, "We don't want to allow that type of grow." So, you would be allowed to regulate, but you can't regulate down lower than the six plants that Almanau allows. So, if you want to say, "We're not going to allow more than six plants in a personal residence," you would be allowed to do that. You would be allowed to say that. That would be the regulation. But you can't dip below the right created under Almanau to cultivate six plants. And you can say, whether that's indoors or outdoors, you can say you can't do it outdoors, but you can't say fewer than six plants indoors. That's the sort of bare minimum. That's as far as you can go.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question on the second one, that we can adopt, I would think we could adopt that outdoor cultivation. It doesn't specify six plants. And because my concern would be then, some kid decides that he's going to be the horticulturist of the year and has these plants, and then sells the stuff. And, I mean, it might be silly, but I think that it's a possibility. And...
Well, kids aren't allowed to have marijuana, so, or sell it or any of that. So, we're not talking about anybody under 21 here, correct?
Unless it's there, it's for medicinal use. If it's for medicinal use, a minor may have a card.
Okay.
But they have to be 18.
I believe they have to be 18, or they have to have an adult caregiver to get it. I think it is permissible. You certainly have children who have medicinal needs when they're younger than 18.
Okay. Todd, how do you feel about this gray area, I think of it as a gray area, above six plants, up to the 100 square feet, that's technically not commercial? I mean, is there anything, if we ban anything, say, above six plants, is that at all enforceable?
I think everything is enforceable, but I'm just pointing out that I think there's a liability for us as we go. This is a moving target, this law. And I just think you're, we're really putting our code enforcement, which is going to end up being our police department, in a really difficult situation. And think about, like, the time it takes to actually handle that code enforcement on any given resident. So, I'm just concerned about it. But I would absolutely recommend to the council, if you're uncomfortable without, you know, what we're talking about, I think it's just, I just want you to be aware of the enforceability issue that I think we're going to end up having, and we need to continue that conversation. But absolutely, I would not recommend allowing anything over six plants.
Okay.
Okay? And so, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that.
And I would personally support a moratorium for anything above six plants, both inside or outside.
I agree with that.
I'd prefer, prefer an outdoor moratorium across the board, realizing that the police will use their discretion, mainly because I expect, once it's known around the neighborhood who's growing what where, the kids will take samples. And then, I'm worried about how the people will react to protect their little plot.
Hello?
I mean, all they need is Grow Lite, and they can grow it in their closet.
Good.
You know? But it's not outside. It's, I think, doesn't serve to give impetus to other kids to grow it, too. Or, you know, I just think that, I just think that having those two things, and then we can expand from there later on, where we get public input. But I would recommend just, just using both of those points. And then, if there's going to be any modification, we can do that, you know, over a period of months and public hearings. I'm sure there'd be a lot of people that will come to a public hearing. We had those in the past.
Well, since six plants are allowed inside, I don't see why we shouldn't allow six plants outside. There's some medical marijuana patients who may not, for whatever reason, want to set up Grow Lights and everything inside, and might want to put a plant or two outside. I don't feel the need to quibble about inside versus outside. I do feel very strongly that we don't want a bunch of people going nuts with 80, 100, 150 plants. So, I would like to see six plants be the limit, inside and outside, and issue a temporary moratorium for anything greater than that. And we see how things go, and we can always scale that back if we want to. It's not like a commercial operation where, once they're grandfathered in, they're in. We can always scale that back if we want, if there are problems.
Not after January 1st.
Yeah. That's what I just asked. Teresa said we can. Because cultivation's different than a commercial establishment.
Personal cultivation, as opposed to commercial cultivation.
Right.
That sounds like a reasonable position to me, that's enforceable and also consistent with current practice, with what's out there.
And don't forget that 70% of the Marin population voted to legalize marijuana for recreational purposes. Only 30% voted against. So, I feel the need to allow for, you know, the possibility for personal use, in one way or another. We don't necessarily need to welcome a whole bunch of commercial operations, but I think we need to respect the voters' wishes in a practical way. So, bit of a standoff? Not sure where Sloan sits?
No. What I was, the reason that I made that suggestion was because I would think that just innately, there would be no reason for somebody to go into somebody's closet. And so, it isn't even, it wouldn't even have anything to do with being enforced or not.
Right. But a cancer patient, somebody who's dying, is not necessarily going to want to maintain a grow operation in a closet. And that might be beyond what they have the energy to do. I just think we need to afford people a little bit of flexibility when it comes to something like that. And I think the voters voted very strongly that they want access to marijuana.
Yeah. I just feel, and it puzzles me why it hasn't been done already, but why they can't just go to Rite Aid or CVS and pick up their prescription.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
And that's what's, to me, just puzzling.
Well, you can see that we're struggling with that one a little bit, but you have a sense that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's then back up now to the discussion point on page six. Does the town council want to prohibit all marijuana-related commercial activities, both medical and non-medical? Or, does the town council want to explore regulating the commercial cultivation, warehousing, manufacturing, distribution, testing, and sales of medical and/or recreational marijuana?
Right.
And then, if permitted, do you want, do we want to impose a local business tax in addition to the state taxes?
So, I guess the question here, given you're, have already opined or given us some direction on the urgency ordinance, but the question really is, is it worthwhile for staff to go ahead and start to investigate and bring back some more information about the different types of commercial businesses, taxation, so on and so forth? At this, you know, while, while we have the urgency ordinance in place, you know, is that something that the council thinks should be explored?
So, the idea is that the moratorium, if you decide we're going to bring one back, and if you vote in favor of it, it will be imposed. It will be a temporary ban that allows you to go through a normal zoning text amendment process. And your choice will ultimately be, do you want to ban these businesses outright? Do you want to perhaps allow some of these businesses? You may want to allow some and not others. If you do want to allow them, what type of regulation, if any, do you want to impose on those? And so, staff is looking for some direction about the process and what to bring forward as a starting place to the planning commission to look at and to explore. It does need to go through the planning commission regardless of where you land here, but I think staff is looking for some direction about where that process should start at the planning commission.
Okay. Who wants to start on this one?
I will.
Bob.
Again, on the Coalition for Healthy Youth, we've done a lot of research and work on this. And to me, the issue of a commercial business for marijuana use, what it really does is it creates an atmosphere of normalization, because it's legal, just like alcohol is now illegal at the age of 21. And the real impact of that that we have seen is on youth and adolescents in particular. There's a lot of research that's come out in the last few years that states that the effects of marijuana on the adolescent brain are not good, right? It inhibits growth, it does a lot of things that are bad, and those are things that are never going to be recovered. And when marijuana is normalized, it starts the age of experimentation and onset and usage earlier, which probably accelerates some of the harmful side effects. I can go into a lot more data. The only other one I want to make... The only other one I want to make, which I think is really relevant, that we talk about in a lot of our parent education groups, you know, THC is the active ingredient in marijuana. In the nineteen seventies, when marijuana first became popular in the United States, the THC level was about three to five percent. So that's the type of marijuana. If anybody here ever inhaled back in the nineteen seventies, that's what you were smoking. What we're seeing now, they recently achieved a high of thirty-nine percent THC in marijuana. So what a lot of people don't realize is that today's marijuana is infinitely more powerful than what was out there thirty years ago. Consequently, the effects are much greater. And the other effect of recreational marijuana legalization is that the delivery form is different. So you're seeing edibles. And the concentration of THC in edibles is even higher. So now you're starting to see things where children, for example, are finding what they think are candy bars in their parents' house and trying it out, and they're ending up in emergency rooms. There was just a story on CNN about that today. So for a lot of reasons, you know, I'm not, and, believe me, I think there are absolute legitimate medical uses, but in terms of commercial use, personally, I think it's a big mistake, and I would not like to see it in this town.
What would you think about allowing something like a laboratory that does testing for contaminants and things like that? You know, for like molds and pesticides? I'm just throwing out a hypothetical.
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
There's more to commercial operations than just a retail establishment. There's, you know, warehousing, what were some of the other things? Warehousing, manufacturing of edibles, but there's also things like testing, laboratory testing, research. I don't know what micro-business means, but there are other kinds of businesses relating, related to cannabis that are not just retail delivery.
I guess I could have a discussion about it. I would not be inclined, given the number of things that we need to do as a council, to invest the time to understand the intricacies of how we would regulate and tax potentially those types of businesses. I think it would be simpler and cleaner just to ban commercial sales, which I know is a radical position.
Commercial sales and manufacturing.
We have not had any public input on this.
Hold on, you said commercial sales, but manufacturing, distribution, delivery, cultivation, and testing a micro-business. It's all up there on the screen.
Yeah. All commercial-related, commercial activities, both medical and non-medical.
No, up on the screen right now, the nineteen categories of businesses.
I don't see a lot of benefit for the town in, as I said, trying to pull apart the intricacies of one of those businesses and regulating it. For example...
I'm not sure I do either. I just wanted to double check.
Let's talk about a laboratory, right?
Yeah.
That's a two-hour meeting for us, to figure it out, understand how to regulate it, how are we going to enforce it, what are we going to do?
I get it, I totally get it.
It's not what we do.
Right.
We got so many other things to deal with.
Okay. Jim?
I agree with Bob.
Carla?
Well, I certainly support adopting the urgency ordinance.
We're beyond urgency, and we're talking about, like, once we're in a moratorium, and we're actually talking about what the policy of the town might be, that we want to see staff kind of start to investigate and pursue in terms of writing up a draft ordinance and taking it to planning commission. So we've already got the moratorium in place, assuming. What do you want to see come back?
Okay.
Oh, we're on page six.
What I would like to see come back is the results that other neighboring communities are having, those that didn't adopt such an ordinance, to see where the nearest facilities are to Corte Madera, that people could use outside facilities or dispensaries. I would also like to see some sort of record of problems that dispensaries have had to deal with.
Dispensaries as well as commercial retail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And because I know I just read where somebody came with a gun into one of the dispensaries, and it was a very unfortunate situation. And I think it would be interesting to see if there's anything on the horizon that is going to provide medical marijuana, either through a physician or through a pharmacy. So the onus isn't on a city to do that. And that's what I come up with over the top of my head.
Thank you. I would agree with everything that's been said, and also mentioned that the county will be allowing up to four medical cannabis dispensaries with a license somewhere in the county, unincorporated. So it's not like Marin County voters that voted to approve this are not going to have some options here in the county, so.
They're trying. They're trying to find a...
I know, yeah. Do you have enough direction on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Page seven. Does the town council want to prohibit or regulate mobile delivery businesses from delivering medical or non-medical marijuana within the town?
So I think we try, you know, we're sort of, the word businesses is in here, so that, that sort of, I think, falls under one of the commercial businesses that we just discussed. But if we take, I think there's also the scenario that the town attorney, Teresa, just mentioned about the pizza delivery guy idea as well. We can't prohibit somebody delivering through town. Could prohibit somebody from receiving a delivery, if you're a resident, for example, in town, receiving a delivery of either medicinal marijuana or recreational marijuana in town. Although, again, we were, the enforcement of that was something we wanted to talk about, and it's a challenge, obviously, but it can be done.
I would also foresee a situation...
And some people may want medical...
Right. But if we allow commercial, I can imagine something like an Uber Eats, where it's like Uber Buds or something.
Sure.
Or Uber Bakes, I don't know.
Right, and as long as they, right, we'd have to...
All right, who wants to start with this? I'm sorry, Rita? All right, so let's discuss both medical and non-medical. Yes, Jim?
If we prohibit it, will that really have an effect? You know, other than having a rule on the books saying that we aren't for it, but they'll deliver anyway, so what the hell?
It's one we struggled with a little bit, when we always talk about the practicality of enforcement. It looks like the county on one of your attachments, they're not providing any regulations with regard to medical dispensary and collectives delivering marijuana. But it just comes down to, just what is the council's philosophy on it? If you're against it, I think it's good to have it on the books then, because when we have a situation, we, there are cases where we could enforce it. It would be difficult unless, you know, it's happening constantly, and then the neighbors are saying, hey, this car's the one delivering it, or whatever, it happens at this time. I mean, we would have to, in the moment, be in position to enforce it. But if the philosophy of the council is that you're against deliveries, and a lot of jurisdictions are starting to take that on and consider that, then I would recommend you consider it, and we can always find a way. But enforceability is difficult. It'll be difficult for us.
Okay, anybody want to start on this one? If not, I will.
I, oh.
Oh, you want to go, Carla?
Yeah, I can go on this one. I frankly, and it was to your point, Diane, about people that need it for medical purposes. I think that if it's delivering medical, a medical product, I can certainly live with that. And I think just from, you know, a sensitive point of view, I think that it should be okay. I think it would be perhaps, well, it's something to discuss later, but some way that, that going through town, a person is aware that they're developing, or that they're delivering medical marijuana and not recreational marijuana. Otherwise, you know, we're going to just have a whole entourage of cars all over the place, delivering recreational marijuana.
Traffic problem.
To those seventy percent of voters that voted for it.
Well, not necessarily seventy percent in Corte Madera.
True. Seventy percent in Marin. Okay, over here?
I'm not a big fan of creating ordinances that we can't enforce. It just feels like a waste of time and money to me. But I'd be willing to consider something along the lines of what Carla just talked about, but in general, I mean, what are we going to do? Build a wall around town and, you know, check people as they come in? Hey, are you delivering? You know, no, we're not, obviously. So this one's less critical to me.
What would you...
It speaks back to me, it speaks to me back to the issue of normalization.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a big difference between a car sort of discreetly pulling up to somebody's house, and, you know, a giant sign on one of the stores in the town center.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm sure Bob's misgivings about having an ordinance that we don't enforce or cannot enforce. Would there be any downside if we did nothing for a year, and then decided that we wanted to ban deliveries?
There would be no downside.
So if it became a problem, some way, and we thought there was a way to enforce it, we might be able to step in and do something?
Your earlier decision about banning all commercial activity would apply if you had a mobile delivery retailer who wanted to locate their business in town. They wouldn't be able to do it if you had banned that. So it bans essentially the brick and mortar. But if you're talking about a business located elsewhere that is just going to deliver the product here to a customer here, you can create that regulation later, and then what was allowed is no longer allowed. There's no non-conforming use because you don't actually have the business located here.
In the staff report, you refer, it's referred, there's a paragraph in here, top of page seven, kind of the middle of that top paragraph, it refers to a licensed mobile delivery business. So the state will be licensing these deliveries, right? These delivery businesses?
That's correct.
So the, so when I mention like Uber marijuana, Uber Bud or something, that's not the type of business we're likely to see, at least initially, correct?
No, the licenses, they have to be licensed, and while the state is allowing certain types of business to overlap, they, you know, you can't be FedEx, a commercial carrier, and be licensed. You have to be a specialized license. So you're not going to end up with a licensed individual who is, you know, Uber as well as a delivery, a cannabis delivery provider.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit better, that, you know, you're not going to see an order placed by a bunch of teenagers for the pizza and a bunch of marijuana that's going to arrive together in one nice neat package of pot and munchies together. I would hope that if this ever changed, it would allow the town to maybe rethink the ordinance, because I'm not sure we want to...
I think if the licensing structure becomes different, the town could certainly revisit, or the town could revisit even if the licensing structure remains the same, but there's more of a problem than perhaps you're anticipating. This is one of those areas where the January deadline isn't, isn't, there's really no consequence, other than you might have a nuisance that has, is occurring in your community, but then you can pass legislation and clean it up then.
Okay, good. Then I would go along with the idea that it's likely to not be enforceable, let's not mess with it. Okay. Page eight, discussion points. Does the town wish to impose, quote, "reasonable regulations" on personal cultivation of up to, up to six plants within a residence, or detached enclosed structure on the property? Does a town want to regulate or prohibit outdoor cultivation for personal use? Well, we were kind of at a draw on this, under the moratorium, so I'm guessing we'd be at a draw on this. Maybe we want to wait and see what other towns do.
Yeah, I think that's a good position.
And also see if there's any, you know, towns do allow outdoor grow, if there are any negative effects, you know?
Yeah.
If plants start disappearing, and then folks start protecting their plants with booby traps, then, okay.
Right. Or potentially other criteria that other municipalities or jurisdictions have put on outdoor grows that may be helpful.
All right, any other thoughts?
I think Jim's right.
If I may, through the mayor, it sounds from the earlier discussion, one item that council might wish staff to also explore is the possibility of regulating above the six-plant figure. So, again, the state allows those who are patients to grow more than six plants up to a hundred square feet, and so that's an area where you can regulate if you choose, and Alman doesn't change that. So that may also be an area you want staff to look at, or perhaps not.
Well, I don't know enough about this to know if six plants is adequate, but I would think it is.
I think it is, yeah.
Come back with this...
We can come back with...
More information?
Six plants.
Don't come back with six plants.
And maybe you got the buds.
Just more information. All right.
That's not who he is, too, probably, right?
Thank you. You have, you're walking?
Absolutely, no, I appreciate the discussion. I think it's very helpful.
Okay. Great, thank you, good discussion. All right, let's move on now to town manager and council reports. Todd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am working with Rebecca, and we're trying to find a format for our newsletter, and so I will send you a couple of examples as we go, but that's our primary focus right now, to get that up and running. And again, we're working hard to transition our finance team to some new systems and updates with the warrant reports on the council agendas. We're looking at a standardized monthly report that has information that I think the council would appreciate, and I'm going to work through the mayor and councilman Andrews as a finance team to get some feedback from you moving forward. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council reports?
Sure. Two quick ones. Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, our last meeting, we did a field trip, and we visited the County Emergency Operations Center, which I'm bringing up only because it was one of the most impressive things I have seen. It is unbelievable. It is like walking into a science fiction movie. It is amazing. You know, giant video screens, they're monitoring everything, and computer monitors all these seats, and it gives you an incredible feeling of confidence in an emergency, that we are incredibly well-served by this facility. It is just astounding. The second part of that trip was, but then we went and we saw the dispatch center. So fire, police, all the, and medical, all the calls go into this dispatch center, and we actually got to walk around the room. And again, an equally high level of sophistication. Each one of these people has about eight computer screens, and they've got protocols that they're following, and, again, gives you an incredible feeling of how well we are served, and what a good decision it was by... served, and what a good decision it was by Central Marin Police a couple of years ago to move our dispatch services up to there. Not that we weren't doing a great job down at the police building, I'm sure, but by consolidating, we not only save money, I think the level of service we were getting as a community is phenomenal from both of these services, and it was really gratifying to see. And then, secondly, we had our first meeting of the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, which is combining with the Ross Valley Coalition to form the Coalition Connection, and we're going to have a much larger, more effective group, we think, operating in the Drake High School District as well as Redwood. John Wright is the co-chair, along with myself, and we'll be giving you more on that soon. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Jim?
Okay.
Carla?
Okay, just a couple of things. Tomorrow is the Third Wednesday Speaker Series that is sponsored by the Park and Rec, Age Friendly Corte Madera, Marin Villages, and Age Friendly Solutions, and the topic is Ways to Age in Place by Creating a Second Unit or a Junior Unit. And it's going to be given by Rachel Guinness from Lily Pad Homes. It's made quite a name for herself with promoting this concept that has been now approved statewide, and she's a Corte Madera resident. So, anyway, that's at 1:00, and it is at the Central Marin Police Facility, and it is in the community room at 1:00. So, I invite anyone who's interested to, by all means, come. Then, a week from this Sunday is our third annual for Age Friendly Corte Madera, the third annual party honoring everybody in town that is 90 or over. And we already have quite a few RSVPs from those people that will be honored, and, but everybody's invited to join them. And I'm sorry, council, in my car, if I catch you before, if my car is too far away, I've got the invitations for you. Otherwise, mail or just drop in the box.
I got one already in the mail.
Oh, did you? Okay, good. So, anyways, those are coming, and that should be really a fun deal. There'll be food, there's going to be music, entertainment, the whole bit, and one of the key things that I think everybody here would be interested, the people have been asked to say something that they think has, that they did in their life that nobody else has, and you can't believe some of the things. I mean, these people lived through history, and it is just unbelievable. So, anyway, you're all invited, Rec Center, 2:30 on Sunday, the 27th, August 27th. And I went to the LAFCO meeting. We approved the water study that was done for our region, and the one thing that really had any impact for us was that they commented that Corte Madera is using either 88 or 89 percent of its storage facility for water. Therefore, we need to think about building another catch, or whatever you call it.
Reservoir?
Like, either a reservoir or a tank, some-
Storage?
Some storage-type tank. And they decided to lay off on us not supporting a consolidation, which is something that I have been really-
For wastewater treatment.
For San 2 being consolidated-
Right.
With another district.
Right.
And so, anyways, but it was about, it was over 300 pages, and it did show what a healthy organization we are running. And then, Diane, I'll let you talk about the police council?
Yeah, there wasn't, was that it?
Well, it was, it was the, that Toby Miller-
Oh, yes. Why don't you talk about that one?
Oh, that was, you know, that's when it really, you get all teary. One of the, the police staff, Toby Miller, he was called over to Mount Tam Racquet Club that there was a man who had collapsed, there was no pulse, and he was able to revive him and with the help of fire, and that he looks really good. And so, that was something that with our new defibrillators, it's really made a difference for several people already, and so, we're so grateful to that. And it was actually one of the retired fire depart, of our fire department, Roger Benz, who contributed a lot on behalf of his father-in-law. And then, what else? There were three new members have joined the police authority, you know, it-
Call the department.
Can I call the department? The police department, and they were sworn in, and there was a lot of discussion on various things, including the financial, we heard from the auditor about the finances. So, anyway, that's all I can think of right now.
There was one other, which is the only thing I had in addition to that, if I might. Chillin' with the Chief-
Oh, that's right.
-tomorrow. So, after you go to the speaker series, head over to Red Hill Shopping Center in San Anselmo for frozen yogurt at Swirl. Chief Mike Norton will be there from between 3:00 and 4:00. And I have to commend the Central Marin Police Department, I guess. You probably can't see it, but nice little graphic that they tweeted out. It's got the little frozen yogurt with the police logo, anyway.
Oh, there was-
It's a pretty good outreach.
Yeah, there was-
Chillin' with the Chief.
One other thing, I think it's tomorrow in San Anselmo. Are they passing out the pink badges?
Oh, you have to buy them.
For $10 donation.
$10. In fact, I have one.
Do you have one already?
I bought mine. The Central Marin, thank you, that's a good one to mention. Central Marin Police Authority have created the police badge in pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which I believe is October, so this is a fundraiser for a local breast cancer research organization, I guess.
Yeah.
I think it's local. Anyway, so, if you're interested, you can pick one up at the police authority for $10.
Oh.
All proceeds go to charity.
You didn't have to go to San Anselmo.
Well, I bought it at National Night Out.
Okay.
So. Bought off the press.
I think you can buy them at the police authority.
Yeah, I think you, yeah, Zeneta, at the police authority-
Okay, great.
Has them. But aren't they, aren't they cute? Anyway. So, that's it for reports. A review of draft agenda for upcoming town council meeting, Agenda Item 8.1. I had one addition.
Okay.
We will be having a presentation by Caltrans and Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill. I am serving on the task force that are working with both of them on updates to the Tamil Pius Drive overcrossing for pedestrian ADA and bicycle safety. We should be hearing about what Caltrans initial research has uncovered, really pretty much based on whether or not it's feasible to put this pathway. You might have seen the concept, we discussed it at the council, and there was an article in the IJ a few months ago. So, they would like to make a presentation. Okay?
Got it.
Any other changes?
And then, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just really quickly, we're waiting for Councilman Bailey to respond to our scheduled request for a potential retreat, and so when we receive that, hopefully this week, we will send something out and confirm that date. I believe it'll be before this council meeting. Does it, or will it be after?
There were two options that were unanimous for the four responders prior to the 19th and two after the 19th.
Okay. So, that is, and that is going on, and one last thing, and it has to do with a future agenda item, but staff has been working on the Paradise Corridor issue, and as we know, Marin Montessori is coming before us in September. I will have the draft of this overlay, and I'll talk about that in a second, but I'll have it by Monday or Tuesday next week, and I'll figure out how I get that to council, and I think it could be a piece as we move forward. It's staff's attempt to look at the entire Paradise Corridor from a traffic safety improvement standpoint, bike and pedestrian routes, traffic improvements. When we have some of our projects, specifically Marin Montessori or the Robin project coming up as well, we will have some options for council to consider with those projects. And so, we're looking at crosswalks with red lights, I mean, we're looking at everything. And with this overlay, you will see approximately 12 projects. A lot of them are in our current improvements plan, but you'll have prices to it, and we'll be able to, I think I'm a visual person, I think you are too, we'll be able to actually look at it and prioritize, and it's something that I want to take to council at our retreat and possibly discuss it, because I think it's one of our big issues moving forward over the next couple of years, and I just wanted to let you know that that is also coming your way in the coming weeks.
Will you be able to email it to us as a PDF?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? No? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.[1776.22]